It is nine twenty on January twelfth, incredible, middle of January already, 2023. I'm Commissioner Ed Rothstein and got a pretty lengthy agenda to go through this morning. Without further ado, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think the first thing we need to do is recognize the wonderful audience we have out in front of us and those on TV land, but also Ms. Stella, I guess it is a Ms. and not a Miss or Mrs., from our wonderful Boys and Girls Club that is overwatching our lawyer, if he ever gets here, but he will, I'm sure, and I still think there's eyes on all of us. She has that Da Vinci Mona Lisa look where you never know where she's looking, so, but she is a symbol of our Boys and Girls Club here in Westminster that does phenomenal work in our community and Commissioner Gordon just leaving the board, right?
That is correct. My two terms were up.
And has been a part of this community with the Boys and Girls Club, so I applaud your work with them and all the work that the Boys and Girls Club does for our community here in Carroll County. Okay, let's start with Priority Carroll. You kind of scare me over there, Mr. Vigliotti, so I'll start with Mr. Gordon.
Good morning. Well, as Commissioner Rothstein already said, we can address the elephant, or should I say giraffe, in the room this morning. Obviously, we'd like to welcome Stella from Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. She's touring both Carroll County, both businesses, as well as other organizations. She's been to the Carroll Community College, the city of Westminster as well, and numerous businesses to date. Part of this was just something to allow the children of the club to interact on social media and see where Stella's going, what she's interacting with, and who she's meeting with. It might have already been mentioned, but she's already had her HR orientation and has her own county ID badge. But moving on from that topic, I needed to mention the passing of a friend to many of us in this county who left a significant mark on our community. That would be agricultural leader and friend Bob Jones, who passed away on Tuesday, December 27th, at the age of ninety-three. Bob was a pillar and preserver of the agricultural community whose legacy will not be forgotten. He graduated from Highland High School and then he attended the University of Maryland. We received a Bachelor's of Science and a Master's Degree. He also served in the US Air Force during the Korean War. Bob became the Carroll County Agricultural Extension Agent in 1957, serving at that role until he retired in 1984. During his time as county agent, he worked primarily with farmers and youth in 4H. As a community leader, he served on Carroll County boards such as Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission. In sixty-seven, Bob established the Agricultural Business Club, which meets monthly to this day. He helped us establish the Carroll County Farm Museum, the farmer's market, and helped with the planning of Camp Pashua. He was a distinguished service award winner and past president of the Maryland Association of County Agricultural Agents, past president of the National Association of County Agricultural Agents, and was inducted into the Hall of Fame in 2009. He was also past president of the Kiwanis Club of Westminster and named a Hickson Fellow in 2002. Bob was a selfless advocate for the preservation of ag in our community. He was also active with the Agricultural Center, the Maryland Farm Bureau, and the Maryland Dairy Herd Improvement Association. But one of his many accomplishments was to raise $430,000 to move and restore the Hoff Log Barn, which resides at our Carroll County Farm Museum. We will miss Bob's generosity and deeply acknowledge all his involvement in our community. Thank you.
I appreciate it. If you haven't been out there to see that barn, that Hoff barn, it's awesome, you know, and just like everything I think we do in Carroll County and how well we do is because of the community like Bob and those that served with him. Pretty, I appreciate that. He meant a lot. Commissioner Kyler, what's on your mind?
Thank you, everyone. I'll try to keep it brief. We do have a decent agenda today, but a couple of things I want to mention. We did have Mako's Winter Conference and, like, a couple of us, my first experience, but they are a great group. It was great networking there and you learn a lot from it and it's really good. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the State of the County on Monday and the day with Leadership Carroll and what they do with Leadership Carroll and so many other things. Again, like I say, we did our joint meeting with the Board of Ed, I think a very positive meeting and a positive discussion. I've met with a couple of different committees and some directors and some staff, and I'm learning and hopefully I can do that quickly, but I really appreciate the people I've met and the people I've talked to. Thank you.
No, I appreciate, before Commissioner Vigliotti, Mr. Burke, we all gave reference to Ms. Stella, so either a handshake, a hug, a song, a poem, you, you know, okay, just showing the love, okay, and respect that Stella deserves. Mr. Vigliotti?
Thank you, Commissioner. I will truncate my remarks this morning in the interest of the lengthy agenda that we have. So very briefly, last week I spent some time with our awesome Sheriff Jim DeWes, touring the buildings that he oversees, touring the jail, and I was incredibly impressed by the proficiency and the professionalism of the men and women who operate that place and the men and the women who serve under him. I had the privilege of attending the swearing-in of our new state's attorney, Haven Shoemaker. I know he is a good guy, he's committed to law and order, and that's the kind of thing that our county depends on for our quality of life, and I know that we're all looking forward to working with him in the coming years. Skipping ahead a little bit because, you know, there are some things that have already been touched on. I just wanted to make mention last here that one of our previous city council members in Tawney Town, Carl Ebaugh, passed away over the weekend. He was an old-school guy in every, in all of the best ways. He was an Army veteran. He had incredible common sense wisdom and he was a good friend. He was always supportive, always ready to lend a helping hand if something was needed. He'd served on the city council for years and in 2016, when I was still a member of the council, we had a vacancy after one of the other council members retired and we asked Carl to come back and the way that I kind of looked at it was he was this, you know, retired general or retired statesman, retired soldier who was coming out one last time to fill in a gap. And even with filling out the rest of that term, he made a tremendous difference in the town. I'll be attending his viewing this afternoon and, you know, I certainly pray for his family and glad that he is now in heaven. And Commissioner, that's it for me this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let Commissioner Garen get settled for Priority Carroll. From me, just a couple of things. Carroll County continues to lead the way in our unemployment statistics. We're at 2.7%, where the state is at 3.7%. So our workforce development, our community college, Exploration Commons, CCPS, it's not one or the other, it's all together that, you know, puts forward the success of this unemployment statistics. The backbone of our community, as often said, is small business and small business development. I always believe in getting things done for free, so the Small Business Administration has counselors underneath what's called the SBDC, Small Business Development Corporation. We have that representation here in Carroll County and to date, no, not to date, they have valued loans and equity financing of over $4.5 million to small businesses. They've supported almost 200 jobs here in Carroll County, counseled over eighty, in this, I apologize, this is FY twenty-two, eighty-three clients and forty-eight new clients. Sometimes people feel like they're hard to find. Anytime somebody feels like something's hard to find, reach out to one of us and we will navigate you to the right place. I guarantee it, you know? This is not a part-time job, this is a full-time commitment, and that's the way, I believe, me and all my colleagues see this. And that full-time commitment was really shown this past week with Maryland Association of Counties. I will continue to participate with Commissioner Kyler, starting on Wednesdays during legislative session, and the county will be, continue to be represented as I was selected to be on the Board of Directors for Mako. The State of the County, as I shared, the excitement to me is looking at what's on the dais today is the diversity from backgrounds, from ages, from lots of different, you know, ways we look at, look at things, and I really enjoy that, and I'm really looking forward to 2023 being a strong, prosperous year. The last thing, it's gonna be tough, it may be long and prosperous, but it's gonna be a tough year, and the Board of Education joint meeting yesterday highlighted just that. We were very professional, we were very candid, but we were also very upfront, saying we got a long ways to go. And, you know, our participation in the Board of Education meetings, along with the joint meetings, along with the outreach that are formal and informal, will get us, you know, where we need to go, but we have some, we have a lot of work to do in getting there. Really appreciate the superintendent, Cindy McCabe, along with the Board of Education being there yesterday for the joint meeting. They are committed for our community and most importantly, for our children. So really appreciate the time spent with them yesterday afternoon. Okay, Commissioner Garen, what's on your mind?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. I'm sure it was probably already mentioned, well, we had our State of the County on Tuesday and then we met with Leadership Carroll during the day and had a Q and A session. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for that, but what struck me about the Leadership Carroll interaction for lunch and the Q and A was just how intently people were listening. I mean, they're being polite, but they're also listening, they want to hear what we have to say. Relatively new board, new year, a lot of decisions to make. I think I'm encouraged that we're moving forward in bright-eyed and optimistic and also willing to take a look at some of the previous decisions from other commissioner boards that were made. At the time they were made, it's the way it is, but everything can be looked at, everything can be reviewed. I'm encouraged by that. You know, the commissioners, we're elected to lead. If we don't make these types of decisions, somebody's gonna make them for us. So just encouraged by that day in general, but just really struck by how intently people were interested in what's going on in the county, and that was encouraging for me because that's really what I want to see. So that was it, that's really it. Thank you.
I appreciate, and you actually said it very well, that the rubber meets the road at local government and every vote counts and that's, you know, we heard that from Senator Cardin, forgot all about that, we met with him on Monday for an hour, and he gave us his full attention for an hour, and one of the commitments, he said that he'll continue to work with us, but the facts are, where the rubber meets the road, like you said, Commissioner Garen, is at local government, and he highlighted that as well, so appreciate. Okay, now, let's get right into our open session. Our first item is an update, a recommended update to the Veterans Advisory Council bylaws. Ms. Dekel, I think you're coming up here with Ms. Gina, Mr. Bill Nash, and the one who actually runs everything, Ms. Lawrence.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I am joined this morning with Gina Valentine, our Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities, Roberta Lawrence, who goes by Bobby. She is our Aging and Disability Services Supervisor, and then Bill Nash, who is the Chair of our Veterans Advisory Council. This morning, we're before you seeking approval to update for a recommended update to our Veterans Advisory Council bylaws. Each of you have been provided a copy of the current bylaws as they are written and executed in your board packet for your reference. I'm gonna turn it over to Gina to walk us through what the recommended update to the bylaws includes.
Good morning. So on December 20th, at the Veterans Advisory Council meeting, there was a discussion about the bylaws and in particular, Article Five regarding membership number thirteen, council members may not serve as a board member of the Veterans Independence Project, otherwise known as the VIP. And during that meeting, the council voted and approved a recommendation to the commissioners to remove that article from the Veterans Advisory Council bylaws.
Was there a reason why that was there in the first place?
One of the, I believe the true reason was, we haven't updated the bylaws since the Veterans Independence Project has been up and running, and initially, the Veterans Independence Project was a recommended initiative under the initial Veterans Advisory Council Group. So in order to not muddy the waters while that separation and the Veterans Independence Project was becoming its own entity and to keep the two committees, if you would, separate, this was developed and recommended by everyone that was working on both sides of those projects to make sure that it was a streamlined process, and it is true and timely to make this update.
Okay, so it was recommended time by everybody involved after moving forward, it's now, you know, time to move forward. Mr. Nash, do you have any comments on this?
Well, the board voted to approve that. I personally think that we should keep them independent of each other. I'm only one vote, but it has been approved and I think that's the way we go.
Okay. Bobby, any comments?
I agree. It seems like it's antiquated in the bylaws, so I'm okay with it being removed as well.
Yeah, and for me, you know, getting the guidance, nobody knows Carroll County better than Carroll County, and that's why we have these councils and boards, you know, so taking the guidance from the majority of these boards means a lot, you know, as opposed to us up here saying, we will do it this way or not, so. So I'll move the Board of County Commissioners to approve.
If I could.
Let me, let me just make a motion and then we'll go from there to second and then discussion. Uh, move the Board of County Commissioners to approve the revision to the Veterans Advisory Council bylaws.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion, I got a second, now open for discussion.
I have a couple of questions regarding this. Number one, have we ever historically, to your knowledge, done this with any other organizations or individuals in the past? I know we, obviously this discussion was that it was collaboratively done between those two parties, but do we do this in any other variety of our councils or boards? Because, you know, we deal with a wide berth of people as we all know, whether it be veterans, whether it be children's service groups, whether it be any type of entity. Have we ever done this in the past?
To my knowledge, and I don't have the comprehensive knowledge of everything, I've been with the county for 11 years, but I, I don't, I don't recall that we have, but I think in this scenario, I also don't know, from a commissioner developed advisory council, that we've ever had a split within them developing a nonprofit. So I'm not sure if this was kind of a very one-off, kind of specific process. So I, I don't know of any other process where we've identified something that's specific in a bylaw though.
Okay. It just kind of raises some concerns for me because we, as a county, have always been very interactive, be it government, be it private industry, be it nonprofits or just average individuals that want to volunteer. And I find it very troubling that this occurred little, to anybody. It's not specifically this group, it's about anybody. And what, what really troubles me is we have a wide berth of nonprofits in this community. We have people that are starting them on a daily basis. I have people calling me up that want to meet and they have, they have a desire to serve and help the community. And what concerns me heavily is that, does this ever occur again, which one, I would hope it does not. I'd also like to point out though, and this does dovetail into this conversation, that I spent about 20 hours going through the bylaws and commissions of all these groups over the past month or two, actually, actually before we actually got seated. And this isn't apropos strictly to you all, but we have some very interesting conflicts and inconsistencies within all of our bylaws for all of these groups. There are things that in one, we will make a statement that it falls under the commissioner's purview and another it does not. My question this morning, while I think we do need to clean this matter up and remove this, I would like to see us seriously consider not only include that, but I think we need to look at doing a 60-day review of all our boards, all our commissions, have our staff look at these and go from there.
We're doing that already. Um, yeah, you, you mentioned that some time ago, we're putting together information on all the boards and commissions for the commissioners to review and with staff, et cetera. So yes, yeah.
So being a part of the Veterans Advisory Council for quite some time, I mean, I was asked to participate on it from former Commissioner Howard, I didn't even know what the Veterans Advisory Council, or for that matter Carroll County Government was at that point, as I was running installation. But then participating and then I did know Ed Kramer very well because of his work at Johns Hopkins and getting to know Frank Valenti. With them in establishing the CCVIP was very important, it was like top of my list to do. And, uh, you know, working with federal government, TSA, about the building and, and establishing, I am 100% in support of taking care of our veteran community and Bill, you know that very well. Um, you know, whether we missed something or not in, in initial bylaws for this, this is something I was not a part of, you know? And I think we grew out of it, so it's time to update and just like Commissioner Gordon said, there, we do things for the right reasons with the information we have at the time. Whether or not it should stand the test of time or not, you only know that by having the ability to review and having the time to step back and objectively review the rules in the bylaws. And if things need to be changed, they need to be changed. These bylaws were written and designed by, you know, the, uh, the head of the VIP, right? With Mr. Valenti and Mr. Kramer and the VAC at that time, I think actually Frank was the head of the VAC or at that time. Um, so there was no, you know, there was no miscommunications, there was no, you know, I, I've seen again in, in the news very discriminatory, you know, thoughts about this. It was a decision made with the information we had at the time. Taking a look at it now, changing it, you know, whether some dissent from it or disagree, that's regardless. It's what does the majority of the organization, that's like with us, if we count to three, we're good, you know? And if I dissent on a decision, I own up to the decision if the majority, you know, says that's, and that's exactly what you're doing, Bill, and I appreciate that. But, uh, yeah, I just want to be very clear that I wasn't part of the bylaws, but I was part of standing up a very important agency and a, a nonprofit called the VIP for the right reasons. And that's taking care of our veterans. How that changes and morphs over time, you know, we're, we're one community and we gotta look at ourselves that way. And we've had this conversation a lot and I'm very adamant about it because of my commitment to our veteran community and Carroll County. So, but I, I do agree, let's take a look at the bylaws, that's, and if overall, we have lots of committees and lots of organizations and that's what, you know, we're doing, so. Okay, were you gonna come in? I apologize.
Yes. Um, yeah, I'm, um, I kind of don't care about the history or the consistency with other groups. I, I look at that, that I think this was done when it was done to keep the two groups independent so they could develop the best they could. And, and I appreciate that decision. I think it was mutual at the time. I've been involved with a lot of group with, with bylaws and most groups, every year, there's some amendments and some changes because times change, feelings change. The most depressing ones, and I'm sure Carroll County doesn't have that, I, I've been in a group that's had bylaws for 20 years and you correct grammar and misspellings that have been in it for 20 years and nobody noticed. Um, so, so it's, it's understandable. I, I do understand, Mr. Nash, in saying maybe it's not even time to do it because I, I think it's very important to show the independence of the two groups, but I think that's been established and, and I think it probably is time to do it.
Anything else? Okay, I have a, a motion on floor and a second. No further discussion. All in food, all in favor of the action of removing Article 5, Tac 13? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, against? Hearing none. We do have opportunity for public comment, is there any public comment on this? Okay, let's move on to item number two. Thank you, guys. 22, Fall Amendment. Come on up, Ms. Eisenberg. And Price, is there, is she at, or is it just you? On Fall Amendment to the 2019 Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. As President Rostine has said, the purpose of the next segment is for you to solicit public comment on some proposed amendments to the 2019 Water and Sewer Master Plan. Commenters during these, the public hearing process are typically limited to three minutes. And prior to taking public comment, the board generally asked for some information about the proposed amendments and some background. As with us, the staff today is Director Linda Eisenberg from our Department of Planning. If you have any, would you like to give us a little background and?
Sure, I'll give a brief presentation just to refresh your memory. Unfortunately, Mr. Wagner is unable to be with us today, so you're stuck with me to present this information to you. Again, as Mr. Burke said, we are here for the Water and Sewer Fall 22 Amendment to the Water and Sewer Master Plan. We went before the Planning Commission on November 2nd of 2022 to recommend to you, this body, the amendment to the Water and Sewer Master Plan. And we came before you all, if you recall, a month ago, believe it or not, on December 12th, I mean, gave you a presentation to request to go to public hearing, which is today. As we're required under COMAR, this has been posted in the Carroll County Times for two consecutive weeks. This is a clip of the public hearing advertisement. It was in the December 29th and January 5th, 2023, public hearing notice. So again, these are just amendments. So we update this plan every three years as we're required to under state law. We also process amendments twice a year, typically once in the spring and once in the fall. The reason for these amendments are things come up from time to time where property owners need to either come out of the service area for various reasons or properties need to come into the service area for various reasons. Typically, if there's a failing system and it's easy for them to hook up to water and sewer and they don't have an ability to either expand their well and septic tanks, that we can bring them into the system. So today we have three MAP amendments. The first MAP amendment is for the Freedom Sykesville area and that's both water and sewer service. The Hampstead Water and Sewer Service Area and Manchester Water Service only. The Freedom Sykesville area is completely under the county's control for allocating water and sewer service. We work with Maryland Environmental Services, MES, for our wastewater treatment and we withdraw our water out of the Liberty Reservoir for this area. Hampstead's a little unique. The city runs the water system and the county runs the sewer system in this particular area, but we work hand in hand with the town of Hampstead in the planning and allocation of the water and sewer service for that area. And then Manchester is its own sole provider of both water and sewer. In addition to MAP amendments, there is an amendment to a chapter for the city of Westminster and our Table 15, which is a water table that shows you allocations. I'll get to that further on in the presentation, but this is specifically for Westminster's water service area and this is relating to the Westminster Water Resource Facility, which is a pilot study for a new water reuse facility. It was a request under Maryland Department of the Environment that this facility amendment be added to the document, so that's consistent with the Water and Sewer Master Plan. So this happened at the end of August in 2022, they requested to come forward to process this portion in this amendment. The new water reuse facility project will continue to move forward as the city awaits design and permit completion. There are representatives from the city here today if you have additional questions regarding this chapter, which you all should have in your staff report that came before you all. So for the MAP changes, for the Freedom Sykesville area, taking these four parcels, which are known as for, I'm sorry, the Stockdale Smith Properties, 411 Liberty Road, moving from the long range, which is the hatched area, into priority sewer service area. This was able to happen because of some reallocation of underutilized capacity in the Freedom area that we were able to redistribute to these properties. Um, the estimated demand for these properties, based on the calculation we're required to use by Maryland Department of the Environment, is 8,400 gallons per day for all four parcels. The proposal will use a portion, as I said, of the un, underutilized demand for the Zable property, given the density reduction in the last comprehensive rezoning. The ability to use, utilize this demand reduces additional demand developing these properties that would bring to the system. We always run a real tight balance of what we have, we have everything allocated for the system. So in order to bring new properties in, reallocations have to occur and that's why this part, these series of properties were able to be brought in and still keep the system where it needs to be for water and, for sewer demand. In addition, four other parcels are coming in, which is actually just to the east of the properties that you saw in the Freedom area. These are across, from Century High School, more or less, and the proposal is to utilize a portion, again, of that underutilized demand. And the reason that these need to connect is that they are having issues with struggling septic systems and do not have the ability to put new septic in. Several of the parcels actually have existing businesses on them that are having issues and then other parts, portions more toward the western portion of the kind of triangle parcels are undeveloped at this time. So they would have 5,600 gallons per day allocated to them to be able to redevelop and develop these sites.
That's, um, the pizza place where Stafford's is?
Correct.
Ty Quando, that?
Yes.
Across the street from Heiz.
Right. And the idea is the property to the west, the Stavlis Property, which is actually, has an approved site plan for a planned commercial center on that site. They are also in the Water and Sewer Service Area. The property owners to the west are working with them and they would use it as the conduit to connect to the municipal system for the county. But it happened just to be good timing for them that that was moving forward as well so they can tap into that and, you know, get out of their struggling septic system issues.
Okay.
Next, 5591 Linton Road. This was an emergency connection due to a failing septic system. The property owner felt they wanted to be on public water, public sewer for this particular site. It was challenging for them to get an additional septic system put in and it was just as cost effective and better in the long run to be part of the city system, I mean, the municipal system for Carroll County. And so this changing of the map does not really move the needle in the tables because it's one property, 250 gallons per day. So we did not update the table because of that, we just showed it on the map. And I believe that they are already connected to the system because again, it was an emergency situation, so they needed to move forward. So now we're just coming back and making that change consistent with the plan. Um, and at the same time, they decided to go for water as well, which made perfect sense, so they also moved into the water service area and now we're on, uh, public water and public sewer. And again, this is in the Freedom area. So this larger map here shows where the two main properties are. The third one is really small, it's over in this area off of, um, Linton, so we didn't outline it on the map, but this general northwestern quadrant of the Freedom areas where the updates are occurring. And as you can see, we're pretty fully allocated, um, there's not a lot of room for additional growth. The hatched means that maybe in the long range, 10 plus years, if we do upgrades to the system, there would be a possibility to extend service to those properties. Some are undeveloped and some are developed, so we will be retrofitting in systems to those sites. Um, the light green is a seven to 10 year and then the priority means you can hook up today and turn on the water and it'll be available. Once the site's fully built out, we move that to the existing final planning, which is the darker green. So as you can see, most of the Freedom area is in existing final planning, so there's not a lot to allocate in addition, for additional development at this time. The Manchester area had an amendment they sent in as well. This is to remove the?
I apologize, Linda. That Sykesville, is there no changes or requests?
For the town of Sykesville? No.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so for the Manchester area is to remove the Colt Rider property at 2,900 Hanover Pike and 2,419 Hanover Pike from the projected water supply demand. And this will also change Table 15 as well, placing these properties in the long range. This is a request from them to be moved. We don't just move properties in the county or in the municipalities without the landowner's consent on that. So this is one that was brought forward by the town of Manchester, working with the landowner to move them out of that, um, long range. Um, and then move the long range, move 2,912 Manchester LLC at 2,912 Hanover Pike property from long range to existing as well, because they are both currently being served. So this is to bring the maps up to date. And then next, the town of Hampstead requested the addition of 630 Hanover Pike to the priority water service area. The property is currently in use and is served by public water and private wells. This is bringing them on to public water. The property is in the beginning stages of being annexed into the town. All of our municipalities do require, except for the city of Westminster, to be in the corporate limits in order to be served with municipal water and/or sewer. Although the, the total area of the property is 52 acres, the potential gallon, gallon demand, 52 acres times 800 is 46, 41,600 gallons. The priority water demand is based on the existing sewer usage, which is an average of 500 gallons per day. And this is the Random House site and currently they are on private water. So this is to get them onto the public system. And they've been working with the city and obviously the, uh, city of Manchester, town of Manchester to move this, Hampstead, I'm sorry, to move this forward. Um, nextly, and they- Nextly, in the Hampstead area is to move 1734 Hanover Pike from the future to the priority service on the Hampstead sewer service area map. The property has been used as a self-storage with a small office. The amount of water demand is minimal as calculated in Table 32. So therefore, again, because it's so small, there is no need to update the larger demand tables, but to update the map to be in correspondence with how the property is being used. So these are the tables. I'm not going to go over each number, but this is what we are submitting to Maryland Department of the Environment for their review to make sure that they're good with how the numbers fill out for the demand and capacity to supply water and sewer service to these properties. So we typically give you a recommended motion. This is a legislative public hearing, so we will leave the record open for 10 days after today's meeting to take in additional comments. We have not received any comments to date. So with that, Tim, is there anything else we need to do for the public hearing this morning?
No, unless the commissioners have any questions or.
Are there any questions, discussion? I do have getting comments about the Zabel property and the reallocation of water sewer from the Zabel property to these other properties. I get confused. I mean, maybe it's because I'm a simple-minded person, but I get confused on what the folks are trying to really tell me. Are they saying that the allocation of water and sewer is not there, appropriate for development in Zabel property? What's the gist of what? Because I've sent some of that to you as well, and I wanted.
Sure, so the Zabel property in the Freedom 2018 plan.
I apologize. Zabel property is between Ridge Road, Marysville 2, in the southern part of the Freedom District, kind of to the southeast of Walmart.
If you look at these lighter patch of properties here to the southeast, it's this clumping here, the furthest ones to the eastern, southeastern portion.
It's a large property for residential opportunity, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure, so when the Freedom Plan was developed in 2018, the calculations were based on the future land use designation of residential medium, which is our R-20,000 district. We did comprehensive rezoning, I'm sorry, let me back up. When we did the plan, we made sure at that time that the land use designations had the proper corresponding infrastructure to make those come to reality in the future. So we weren't allocating or designating things that we knew we couldn't serve with public infrastructure. So therefore, you know, we did the math and saw that we could supply those properties at that density with water and sewer service. Fast forward, we did a comprehensive rezoning of all the properties that were to be in concert with their master plan as a buyer request. So property owners could come forward and say, now I wish to be in agreement during this timeframe that we set out with the master plan. So the property owner of the Zabel property came forward wishing to be rezoned to R-20,000 to be in alignment with the Freedom Plan. At that time, the Board of County Commissioners did not feel as appropriate to rezone those properties, so instead of moving to their R-20,000 designation, they stayed at their current R-40,000 designation, which is half the amount essentially. So half of that allocation under a site plan has now been freed up, so to speak, that can be reallocated to other parts of the Freedom area. I would say this, because it's not built yet, you wouldn't want to hang your hat on one property being the linchpin to add other properties. There were other changes within the Freedom area that have also taken place to free up additional capacity. So it wasn't solely based on that decision. We had capacity in other ways from how other properties had been utilized and actuals over the last several years that rebalanced the Freedom area that also made it possible to redistribute that small amount.
Yep, no, that, say it very well. It just gets complicated. I apologize, Commissioner.
No, 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 sorry, just a general question. You'd mentioned that, or I guess my question is, at what point or at what amounts does a change in GPD necessitate the tables to be updated? Because I guess the way that I'm looking at this is that if we have these minimal changes, but they're not reported over time, I mean, at what point does that add up to become problematic?
Absolutely, and so they will be. So we rebalance this all the time. Whenever we do an amendment, we update the tables based on actual demand and things like that. So this is estimated demand. We don't know what the actual is until they've started up and running. We do this plan in its entirety every three years as we're required to by Comar. So at that three-year threshold as well, we pull in all new actual data. So that'll move the needle in one way or another, but because they're in the thousands, decimal places, you know, a small amount's not going to change that number with the rounding.
And you know that if they're falling between, if they fall under the range that works, okay.
Correct, that's correct. So as you'll see, we'll be before you hopefully by June of this year with the extra triennial update, which is kind of, let's clean all this up, restart, and now you'll see the additive over the last several years be recalculated and calibrated. And so it's kind of like that, resetting the base for things, because usage fluctuates over time. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay. So do I ask if there's any comments from the public at this time? Is there anybody in the room? Want to comment?
Chris.
We have no one on, we have no one on the line, but if Linda could pull back the virtual window so we can run the timer, that would be great.
Yeah, but Chris, you're not supposed to sit until I ask you, so, okay. So there's no one on the line and there's no one in the, in the room. What I do need now is a motion to close the public hearing and keep the record open for 10 days.
So moved?
I got a motion.
Second.
I got a motion, second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You.
I'm still here.
Okay, let's go, where are we at? Oh, rezoning case 229, the Hutton Street 21 LLC, Department of Planning. Linda and Hannah, take it away.
Yes, all right, commissioners, I have with me today Hannah Weber, who is a comprehensive planner in the Department of Planning. And we're here before you today to request to go to a public hearing for a zoning map amendment, or commonly known as a piecemeal rezoning. This will be your first time as a board having this type of public hearing, so we wanted to give you a brief overview of what this means. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Hannah. This is different than a comprehensive approach. And this is also different than the last public hearing that you just had, which was a legislative public hearing, because we're changing a document. This will be more of a quasi-judicial type of public hearing, where you'll be sitting more as a jury, so to speak, and there will be testimony given during that time. So with that, there are piecemeal rezonings and there are zoning, I mean, and there are comprehensive rezonings. So if Hannah, you can go ahead and go over your presentation, that'd be great.
Good morning, everybody. As Linda introduced, since we have four new commissioners with us, we wanted to give a quick overview of piecemeal rezonings, what they are, and some things to think about when you're making your ultimate decision in the end. So as Linda said, there are two, only two ways to rezone a property in Maryland, and as Linda kind of went over, there's one through the comprehensive rezoning process, and then two is through a piecemeal rezoning process, and that is what we will be discussing today. Piecemeal rezonings are applicant-driven, and it's usually the property owner or the contract purchaser of the property, and they will apply to have their subject property zoning changed. The request to change the zoning via piecemeal rezoning must be based on one or both of the following arguments, and that is that a substantial change occurred in the character of the neighborhood, or that there was a mistake in the existing zoning classification. And that is taken from the Maryland land use articles that is bigger than Carroll County as it is a state level law. So some more highlights, these are bullet points taken from a Maryland Department of Planning education course. The change or mistake rule puts a difficult burden of proof on the applicant for a piecemeal rezoning. The legislative body shall find that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the current zoning was applied in error, or that a change in the neighborhood has occurred. So that further speaks to the change or mistake arguments needed. And then lastly, even if the argument of change or mistake is proven by the applicant, the local government does not have to grant the request to rezone. So that basically means even in the end, if you as commissioners find that there was a change in the neighborhood or a mistake in the current zoning, you still don't have to rezone the property.
You're not compelled to do so.
So if there's no questions on the piecemeal rezonings, I can go ahead and get started with the rezoning for today.
Any questions on process? No, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So for today, we have rezoning case number 229, Hutton Street 21 LLC. We are located in the Freedom designated growth area. Just, we are north of Maryland 26 and east of the Georgetown Boulevard and Maryland 26 intersection. The request to rezone is 1.931 acres from R-20,000 residential medium to C2 commercial medium. The applicant is arguing that there was a mistake in the current zoning classification. And then here is the zoning of the property and the surrounding area. As you can see, the property is split zoned between C2 commercial medium and R-20,000 residential medium. The request to rezone is only for the rear portion of the property, the part that's zoned R-20,000. So ultimately, if you as commissioners feel you want to rezone this property to C2, the entire parcel would then become C2 commercial medium. So to date, at the December 13th Planning Commission meeting, they gave a favorable recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Today, we are here for an introduction, which I just gave, and as Linda said, a request to go to public hearing. We have a tentative public hearing scheduled for February 2nd. This will be for staff and applicant arguments, as well as time for public comment. We will have a discussion with the Board of County Commissioners and the applicant and staff, and then a possible decision if you are ready at that time. And then if you are not, we have time scheduled for February 9th for a decision.
And part of that process is the property will be signed. So visually, on the property, there'll be signage notifying the community of a public hearing regarding the rezoning of this property, as well as we send letters to the adjoining parcels. However, in this case, since it's so dense, we're actually sending them even further out into the community to make sure that they're aware of this change.
And that'll be posted in the newspaper as well. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions on this one?
I know this is still early in the process, but I can't imagine that people on North Walnut are too, too happy about this. And I haven't read through every history or piece of history on this property, but if this does proceed, I would hope that the owner understands that there's going to have to be some sort of screening or something pretty major to, to help this along, because this particular property, I mean, it's smack dab in the middle of R-20,000. I mean, it's just the pictures, pictures don't lie. I'll be, I'll be looking for that.
So at that time, there's no site plan that's being submitted with this, so it'd be really hard to tell what the actual final product will be. So, but we do have a robust development review process where in this type of situation, the Planning Commission has the latitude to require additional screening and buffers from the local community.
Right now, it's an empty lot.
In the back portion, yes, in the front portion, it is. I don't even know if the gas station is still open, yeah.
The gas station, but right behind it's the empty lot, residential on the right, on the east, and then.
Commercial on.
The stores are on the left, on the.
Correct.
And there's residential in the back.
Yes.
Yeah, and then there's also residential, that's correct. But yeah, okay. I mean, that's, okay. Any, any other discussion on this? Do I hear a motion? Where is this thing?
For motion?
Sure.
I move the Board of County Commissioners schedule a public hearing for rezoning case number 229.
Wait, wait, wait. I think we might have somebody who wanted to make public comment.
Probably is, yeah, I'd imagine.
So.
Okay. I mean, we could, yeah.
So you do that before the motion?
We could have public comment now, it doesn't matter. I mean, we're going to public hearing, but yes, do you have public comment? Sure, why don't you come on up? No, excuse me, the mic behind you. And just do me a fair, state your name, where you're.
Sure, my name is Jennifer Crowley, and I am a resident of North Walnut Avenue. And I received the letter. We attended the meeting at the gas station with the developers on their intentions. And I have spoken with many of my neighbors. We are not in favor of this change. We have that lot back there. It is a great buffer between the commercial area and the gas station, and we're concerned that, you know, it's going to cause disruption to our daily lives. It's going to bring in, you know, people that could be trespassing, loitering, putting our children in danger. And, you know, we just are very concerned about this whole thing, that it's going to decrease our property value. I don't think most people would want a car wash in their backyard, which is what their intention is to build.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I appreciate the comments. Any other comments?
And I too appreciate the comments, and just for clarification, all we're doing today is scheduling public hearing to allow for more public comment.
Exactly.
Correct.
Right. Yep.
So you ready for the motion now? I move the Board of County Commissioners schedule a public hearing for rezoning case number 229, Hutton Street 21 LLC.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion further, discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, myself organized. Okay, let's talk about North Carroll Library Stormwater Management Facility renovation.
Yes, good morning, commissioners.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, before we get into the hearing, wanted to give, kind of set the stage a little bit for this. So the county has a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, otherwise known as NPDES, and this project relates directly to that. And so that NPDS permit is given to us from the Maryland Department of the Environment, and that stems from the Clean Water Act, the Federal Clean Water Act. And that permit requires us to do a variety of things, all related to improving the quality of the water in our streams and rivers. So, and we actually just received our fifth generation permit about two weeks ago. So we are planning on coming before you sometime in the near future to give you an overall informational briefing about the whole NPDS program and what the permit requirements are and so on. But in the meantime, our program is continuing along, and so we're here before you related to a project that's specific to that program. Obviously, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about this project and the program, but I just wanted to let you know that we will be coming back before you again to kind of do a deep dive into the specifics of the overall permit and, and why we do all of these things. So with that, I'll turn it over to Janet O'Meara, who's our Bureau Chief of the Bureau of Resource Management, Ed Singer, who is our Watershed Management Coordinator, and I believe you know Carrie from Office of Procurement.
Right, I appreciate it, Chris, and remember, use small words and explain carefully, because it is a complex issue that we always deal with and can become very confusing, you know, as we move forward with these type of issues. So education from me will always continue, but also don't believe we've gone through this yet for this, you know, my colleagues, but, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioners, we're here today to ask your approval, to request an award, I'm sorry, to award the contract for the North Carroll Library Stormwater Management Facility renovation to White Pine Construction Corporation in the amount of $364,003. The Office of Procurement issued a request for bid, received six responses, with White Pine Construction Corporation being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. This amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
So the, the project we have before you this morning is an existing county-owned stormwater management facility. The county currently owns over 259 facilities throughout, some on properties like the library, senior centers, the majority of which, though, are in residential subdivisions. We have these facilities on a maintenance plan, and we are. We have these facilities on a maintenance plan, and we are, I guess, within the last 10 years, we have, we started that plan. So we're going through, and we prioritized the facilities based on when they were constructed and the type of materials that were used. This particular facility is an underground facility, or has an underground component to it, and the material that was used when it was initially constructed was corrugated metal pipe. That pipe has a life expectancy of around 20 years. It was constructed in 1998. So, we, when we inspected it two years ago, there was concerns that we need to do maintenance on it. So we've worked with Carroll Land Service to develop a plan, and as Carrie mentioned, we put the plan out to bid, and White Pine is our, is the lowest responsive bidder, so...
Commissioners, up on the, up on the screen, there's a location, for those of you who might not be familiar with where the North Carroll Library site is. It's located just on the opposite side of Hanover Pike from Hampstead Walmart and the North Carroll Senior Center, and just north of the Weiss. So, the, we're expecting, we've been in coordinating with the Bureau of Facilities here in the county, plus the library. The library manager of the facility is aware of what we're going to be doing with this project and are on board with the construction that's going to be done. We coordinated for the best time of year for them, so that would have minimal impact on their operations. The area that's shown in red here is the limits of disturbance where this project's going to be done. We're going to have the contractor fence the area, because there's a significant amount of pedestrian traffic in and out of the library, and we just want to make sure that everybody's safe while this project's ongoing. The library building is, it's that fainter line that's outlined there. The entrance is on the opposite side from where the, where that redlined area is, where the construction will be taking place. Right now, you can drive all the way around the building, while this project's under construction, it'll be fenced off, and you'll only be able to come in the entrance off of Eagle Ridge Court, and won't be able to drive the entire way around the facility. But we're here today asking for your approval to award this contract.
Is, will there be any disruption to the access driveway that comes in the back that goes to Weiss? The fence will be...
No.
It'll be outside the fence, and there won't be...
This is actually in the parking lot of the, of the library. It's on the backside of the library. That access driveway that you're talking about, you can see it on the, on the plan. It's, it's actually below the library's property, so it's, that won't be impacted.
Any other questions? It's a lot of money. Why is the big difference in money between White Pine and all the rest?
Well, I believe, you know, it's only speculation, Commissioner, but one of the contractors had told me that the contractor who has a place to go with, there's a lot of, this is an underground facility, as Ms. Omira had referred to, and there's a lot of spool that needs to be removed, and they have, the contractor who's getting this bid has a place to go with the excess fill, and I think that makes a difference. But we've worked with this contractor before, and they've done good work for us, so we're not concerned that it's, I know you've told us before that the low bid's not necessarily the best bid. This is a very reputable contractor who's pre-qualified, and we have full confidence he'll be able to complete the work.
And keeping it local's good.
And they've done other work at the library site before, so it's not like they don't know what's underground there. They put most of it in.
They put it in, yes. They told us that, so...
I remember watching them.
I mean, I like keeping it local, too. That's, that's cool.
And I think the person who'll be managing this was probably about two when they put it in.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay. Need a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the Board of Commissioners award the contract for North Carroll Library Stormwater Management Facility renovation to White Pine Construction Corporation Incorporated in the amount of $364,003.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, let's talk about replacing some Xerox copiers. You flying solo?
I was hoping in IT.
Nope, they're coming.
Okay.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Okay, we are here this morning, the Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services, requests your approval toward the leasing of two Xerox copiers to complete document solutions MD LLC in the estimated amount of $86,271.96 annually. This cost will cover, but is not limited to parts, maintenance, labor, and toner. These machines will be leased via a competitively bid contract through the Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Program for Micro Computers, which is referred to as PEPM, which is a technology cooperative purchasing program. And I'll turn it over to Bobby and Mark to talk about the machines themselves.
Morning, Commissioners. I have with me, you probably already have met Bobby several times, as she helped you get your computer set up when you came onboard, but Ms. Bobby Savaliski is in charge of the Client Services Division of the County and oversees Production Distribution Services. So, Bobby, you want to talk a little bit about the equipment?
We currently have two Xerox copiers in the production services area. They, we have a large black and white copier, and, well, a large color copier, and now a smaller black and white, because we do less black and white and do more color these days. We produce quite a bit of documents, booklets, and basically whatever anybody needs, you know, from Westminster or from the senior centers, sometimes Sheriff's Department. They do a lot of, a lot of different kinds of documents, and these devices are high-end and extremely, what's the word I want, cost savings overall at the price per page.
I have a question about the process, just so I understand, or try to understand. The Technology Cooperative Purchasing Program, is that a contract you're piggybacking, or you are part of that cooperative?
Well, both.
Both.
It is, it is a cooperative program out there. It's been around for many years, and yes, we had to register to join this consortium to take advantage of the discounts that they give us. So we've done both.
And I'm imagining, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that leasing these printers, or, I'm sorry, these copiers, is going to be more cost-effective than actually purchasing them outright ourselves?
Yes.
And that has to do with the fact that there are, that there is a, with these leases, there are, you know, cost coverage, you're talking about parts, maintenance, labor, et cetera.
Covers everything pretty much, other than the paper and the staples.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is my understanding that over the five-year period, it's 86K annually, but we're leasing these for five years, so it's over $400,000 to lease these two?
Yes, and it'll have to be budgeted in each year.
Each year.
So we're just talking about this year's budget.
How badly do we need these? I mean, are we...
Yes, it's, the Production Distribution Services consists of two staff people. As you come in, the sliding doors in the basement, they are directly on the right-hand side, they do all of the copy production for large print jobs for the entire county, and as Bobby mentioned, for some of our partner agencies as well. They are used on a daily basis, if not an hourly basis, downstairs.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? I hear a motion?
Motion to award the lease of two Xerox copiers to complete document solutions MD LLC in the amount of $86,271.96 annually.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's go from copiers to trucks.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with Fleet Management, requests your approval to purchase one 2022 F-250 Crew Cab, eight-foot bed for $52,504. One 2022 F-250 Crew Cab, 6.75-foot bed for $56,779. And one 2022 F-250 Crew Cab, 6.75-foot bed for $55,149, from Kraus Ford of Tonnytown, in the total amount of $164,432. This amount is within the approved budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Breaking down this request, two of these trucks are replacement vehicles for the Bureau of Roads Operations, and one for the Sheriff's Department. I also brought along some pictures today to illustrate the need for replacement of these vehicles. This first group of pictures is of the roads supervisor trucks that we are looking to replace. They are used for the transportation of staff, tools, and materials to and from roads job sites, and they are also equipped with front snow plows, so they do perform winter weather cleanup. And because of their involvement with road brining and salting, they do accumulate an excessive amount of rust, as you can see in the pictures. With the Board's approval to purchase the two new trucks, these will be decommissioned and sold through auction. This next picture is of the current vehicle that the Sheriff's Department is using as the Academy Range Truck. It does transport some dense items and gear to the range. The picture is to demonstrate how, how much weight is actually placed in the rear of the truck, and you can tell by the way the vehicle is squatting. This is why we are requesting the purchase of a 2500 series truck. It will better accommodate that excessive weight. This truck is still in excellent condition, so we are not looking to part ways with this truck. We will repurpose it. Currently, there is a 2015 Chevy Tahoe that is used as the mobile field force vehicle in the Sheriff's Department. It has nearly 150,000 miles, and we're actually looking to replace that anyway. So we'll repurpose this truck that is pictured, that Chevy Tahoe, will be decommissioned and sent to auction. A little briefing on the process of purchasing, purchasing these vehicles from a local dealer. Unfortunately, the major manufacturers have really limited our ordering potential for trucks. In working with the Procurement Office and the Budget Department, we have determined that best route or solution was to shop for vehicles that were in stock. Fortunately, Kraus Ford of Tonnytown has these three vehicles in stock at the moment. They're available for immediate purchase, so with the Board's approval, we would expect to have these in our possession by the end of next week.
You answered that question. Because I was like, what, why are we going to Kraus? It's a first, so, appreciate that. And so, Apple and a couple of the others regional are limiting purchases?
Right, so orders that would be placed through government contracts, either state or other local governments, yes, it's very limited. Actually, Ford is only allocating three orders for Carroll County Government. That order was placed several months ago with the Board's approval. So, yeah, we are exhausting all options at this point to make sure we are replacing vehicles as, as was planned.
I appreciate the staff working, yeah. I mean, you answered that question, so thanks.
I have just a general question, and if anybody can enlighten me, I'd appreciate that. I know you've mentioned that, you know, these vehicles that are being decommissioned will be put out to auction. So I guess my question is, when we make a motion to replace vehicles, and I know we did this back in December, but when we make these motions, do we need to include the fact that we want these put out for auction, or is that just standard policy that this is...
It's part of our, required under our procurement obligations.
Okay.
Yes, that they, we, you know, just as we purchase things, it was through a very prescribed procurement process, we also have to dispose of county property in that same manner, basically.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, thank you. And at some point, I guess, as we get into budgeting, I would be very interested in seeing what kind of, I guess revenue would be the right word, is generated through the auctioning of these vehicles. I'd be very interested in seeing what comes back to us when these are auctioned off.
Do I get that?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
And we can also assume if they were worth much, you wouldn't be replacing them.
You're right.
Okay. Appreciate it. Good conversation. Any further discussion? If not, I need a motion?
Motion to award the purchase of three Ford Super Duty trucks in the total amount of $164,432 from Kraus Ford of Tonnytown.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
You too.
You too.
Okay, let's talk about Pinch Valley Road. Request a public hearing. Wait, are we on that, or not yet?
Yeah, we are. I think we have someone who'd like to make public comment.
I'm sorry?
For the comment.
Uh, no, we...
Bear with me.
Traditionally, we do it before.
Okay, bear with me one second. I just want to get myself set. We are on to Pinch Valley Road. Correct, yeah, there it is, okay.
Yeah, it's the last page in the...
So, let's go with public comment first, and then we'll go on to the discussion, so...
You want to pull that down?
We have public comment?
Yes, sorry.
Yep.
Good morning, gentlemen. Interesting, I'm on this side of the fence. I am a soon-to-be resident of a home off of Pinch Valley Road. So this, of course, has just come to my husband and I's attention that this is potentially going to be happening. I did notice on the agenda, it says that there is going to be requests for a public hearing, and that is kind of what I am asking for, is if something can be held, like a town hall at either Pleasant Valley Fire Hall, with a full explanation to the residents of Pinch Valley Road and adjacent roads off of Pinch Valley Road, such as Pleasant Valley and Hugh Shop Road, as to what exactly this details. I can tell you, as a soon-to-be resident of a home there, Pinch Valley Road is used by mostly all the residential people. Not too many people use it as a cutoff, you know, a way to get around major highways. It is locally mostly used. So I just, you know, hopefully, you can take some, a little bit more time on this. You know, if it is a matter of having to do the airport expansion before, you know, I just, if you have to do the airport expansion, and then look at what you need to do with Pinch Valley, but I just want to make sure that the county continues to make wise choices and not later on going, oh, maybe we shouldn't have done that. So, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's get into the discussion, the briefing.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time this morning.
Morning.
Director Bokey and I are here this morning to request a public hearing regarding the official closure of Pinch Valley Road. Give me one second, I'll pull that back up, I'm sorry. So as you can see from the, well, let me continue on, I'm sorry. As you know, the county has been pursuing the acquisition of fee simple property and various easements necessary for the future runway safety enhancement project. The first phase of construction and relocation of Meadow Branch Road outside of the runway-free object area is scheduled to begin in March of this year. As part of the planning and design of the runway and safety enhancements, a portion of Pinch Valley Road is planned to be closed across the airport property, and cul-de-sacs installed at each end, as shown in the exhibit. The official process to close a portion of the county road involves advertising notice of public hearing for 30 days, and a public hearing must be held to consider objections and counterpositions. And so as you can see here, the road crosses mostly airport property. This cul-de-sac to the east is on airport property. The cul-de-sac to the west is on private property. The property owner there owns all of the property that you see from our, from our property line to that cul-de-sac. They are in favor of putting that cul-de-sac there, and we are working with them to purchase the easement to construct that cul-de-sac on their property. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I'm curious, and I know everything's subject to change. What's the potential timeframe? If you start out, you have the public hearing, and, and I don't know if it's already designed, when will the road close, potentially?
The road itself potentially will close, I would say, within three to five years. It's going to be one of the, one of the first things that we do. Well, one of the first things we're going to do is clear, we need to do a lot of clearing, but that roadway, where you see, you can see the... but that roadway where you see, you can see the end of the runway there, it, from the end of that runway goes down into a valley and then back up the other side, that road will be under 40-foot of soil when we extend the soil that we need for the runway extension.
And that was going to be my next question. This isn't for safety, whatever, this is because it's an actual part of the construction, and it's going to be graded over.
It's going to be graded over, but yes, it's also safety. That area is in the runway protection zone, and we need to own and control everything within our runway protection zone. As you know, I've told you before, the runway protection zone is notoriously where, if a plane's taking off or landing, it's notoriously where they would have trouble and/or crash.
And for everything you've just said is reason why there's no option to really relocate, it has to be closed.
That's correct. As far as the way it's been planned, yes, yes, sir.
With the timeline in development and changes that, you know, are to be made regarding the runway, you said three to five years. Could that be pushed to the right as far as the timeline? I mean, is there a, like, something has to happen for this to then be closed? I mean, or could it be one of the latter activities?
It would need, so, I mean, it can certainly push if some of the, you know, the design, we haven't designed the actual runway and/or this area yet 100%. You know, we've done planning phases, but, you know, once, once, once the design is done, this will be, like I said, you know, we're doing clearing, and this will be one of the first activities as we prepare to install the new runway. Grading absolutely will be one of the first activities.
And because of the grading you described, it's, you know, we're looking at a flat picture, but there's no way that the runway and the taxiway could be ever installed without the road closed because of the amount of grade it needed to make it, make, if we saw a profile, it might, you know, hit us in the head more, but it just, it has to be early.
Yes. Like I said, it's anywhere, it's about 40, 50 feet under soil, that road will be under, I mean, like, so it goes down, the valley goes down about 40 feet, and yes, it'll be 40-foot of fill over top of that road.
So can I ask, and again, we only have part of the map here, within that section of road that would potentially be closed, it looks like there's a smaller road that kind of like S's off of it?
Yes.
Now, what is that road?
So that road is on airport property. It is, it's a dirt road that is used to access to the farm field that is on the airport property that we lease to a farmer. That road, that dirt road extends from Pinch Valley all the way over to Indian Head Valley.
And I'm imagining that road is not a public road, or will not be open to the public?
It's on private property, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I can, just a quick comment. I mean, I can understand, I can understand how there might be some residents affected by this, because it cuts off sort of a north, northeast route for them, and I'm not surprised there's going to be public comment about this. I think when we spoke about it a couple, about a month ago, we really hadn't heard much about the road closure, but I knew there'd be, I knew there'd be some opposition to it, there's got to be, I mean, you're closing a road, so, I mean, it looks like we might have three to five years to go. Plenty of time to let everybody know what's going on, but at the same time, I don't know, maybe look at some mitigating, if we go this route, maybe some mitigating changes to existing roads where it's not as, I don't know, is there anything we can do to the existing roads to just smooth things out and increase the ability to get up to that northeast area? Like, I think it's Pleasant Valley's up there, a little easier than the way it is now if we do close the road?
Indian, I think Indian Head Valley is the closest road, and so what I would say, we can certainly look at that, that may require more property acquisition to take, to extend that road across that way.
Returns to get out of this area.
As it stands now, we own that property, but again, that property is in the runway protection zone, so we can't, we can't install a road across the runway protection zone. But I can certainly look to see if there's any kind of alternate...
I guess, I'm not asking the question real well, but I think you understand my question.
Yes, I do. I'll certainly dig into it.
One, two, three, four, five, real nine, like literal 90-degree turns, if there was a way to, I don't know, increase the flow, I guess.
What's interesting is across the county, we either have cul-de-sacs that want to stay as cul-de-sacs, or we have roads that, you know, want to stay as roads and not turn into cul-de-sacs. And it does, it becomes inconvenient for those that are on those roads, and for future homeowners, you know, the impacts are significant, you know, and it is their priority, you know, is getting in and out of their home, their driveway, their road, their neighborhood, and yeah, that this is, this is significant to those that are living on that road, and we got to, you know, again, have that empathetic approach and look at other opportunities, but, you know, we'll see where it goes. I think right at this point, though, is giving us the details, getting some comments, and then opening up for, because that's what you want to do, is schedule a public hearing, right?
Sir.
Okay.
And I think it's great, public commenter, don't throw stuff, but people are getting a lot of notice about what's happening with this, and I understand the concern with any road closed, but if you look historically at the airport, I remember when people thought it was the end of the world, Meadow Branch was going to close, and now to everybody, it's the existing road, you know, so giving you notice and you can plan.
To your point, Commissioner, it's been in the master plan for 15 years, and so, yes, that notice has been out there. We have reached the point where we need to, the FAA needs to know that we're serious about closing this road, so that's why we're in front of you today, to get the official closure, to move forward with that.
Understood.
The recommendation is not to close the road, it's to schedule the public hearing, correct?
Yep. Okay, do I have a motion? I'll move the Board of Commissioners Director, DPW, schedule a public hearing to officially close a portion of Pinch Valley Road.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion further on this? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk about the relocation Meadow Branch Road.
All right. So as I stated in the previous agenda item, the first phase of construction for the airport runway safety enhancement project is the relocation of Meadow Branch Road outside of the future runway object-free area, and it has been awarded to Allen Myers and is scheduled to begin construction in March of this year. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval from the Board of County Commissioners of Delta Airport Consultants Task Order Number Five regarding construction administration expenses for the relocation of Meadow Branch Road. Construction administration will entail construction compliance monitoring, submittal and shop drawing review, and approval, geotechnical and materials testing and inspections, punchless inspection, final inspection, record, record drawings, and updates to the airport layout plan. The task order total is 455,000. The scope of work and costs have been, have gone through an independent fee estimate review, which is required by the FAA, so what that is, is they actually take a look at the scope of work that Delta has proposed to us, and so an independent consultant that does the same work looks at that and determines whether they feel that fee is reasonable, and so that's, like I said, that's an FAA requirement. And so, it's gone through that, and it has been approved by the FAA, who will pay 90% of the task order number five costs, so that's 4,9,500, and the county will pay 10% of the task order number five costs, or 45,500, out of the airport enterprise fund. These costs have been budgeted, and no further funding is needed at this time. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, in the beginning, and I probably wasn't paying attention, did you say this work, the physical works been bid and Allen Myers is doing it?
That's correct.
And then Delta, does the, does the county control their subcontractors? Do they, I doubt if they self-perform all this, maybe they do.
They do not.
Okay, so do they look at local people, or there's no requirement for that? Do you approve subs, or only after a certain amount? How's that work on this?
We do work with Delta. There are local subs, so the surveying is being done by CLSI. Not all of the subs are local, so there's compliance monitoring, which the compliance monitor will be looking at, are we meeting the Davis Bacon Act? Are we paying the correct wages? Are we meeting our DBE goal on the project? So there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into this, and that's, I mean, on most of our construction projects, you'll see that our fees aren't this high, but in this particular case, there's a lot of reporting and a lot of requirements that is required by the FAA, so that's why, this is slightly higher than what we would typically pay on a construction project ourselves.
And the good news is, somebody's helping pay the bill.
That's right. I mean, you're speaking like a true program manager, so, no, I mean, really, and I appreciate that, because they're very insightful questions that I think need to be asked and need to be listened to, because it is, every time we turn around, it's $455,000 here and $600, I mean, it's like, it's a lot of money, and, you know, the more we keep it local, the better I know I feel, and I think my, you know, colleagues feel, and we should all feel, but anyway. I'll move the Board of Commissioners approve Delta Task Order Number Five for the construction administration for the relocation of Meadow Branch Road outside the runway object-free area in the amount of $455,000.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just a really quick question, and I may have missed this, I apologize if I did. Why is it called Delta Task Order? I mean, what is...
Delta's the consultant.
Delta's the airport consultant that we've hired for the project.
Thank you much, thank you.
Absolutely. And you'll get to know Delta real well, the consultants, they're very, very good, what they do. Okay, I got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion on this? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an item, number nine, and it's a discussion of the supermajority resolution. Did...
A request by Commissioner Ford.
Yeah.
And so, I didn't realize the actual resolution wasn't in the book, so...
Is this the resolution itself?
The existing resolution, the existing resolution.
What's that?
It's the existing resolution.
Okay. What's that? So, okay, so where are we going with this? Do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure, I can take the lead on this. So what we're looking at is Resolution 81, or excuse me, 815-2011, which the, at the time, the Board of County Commissioners opted to essentially create a supermajority resolution that would require any additional future tax considerations to be passed via a supermajority instead of a three-person majority for the board. What we're looking at in reference to this today is one issue that had sort of come up in topic of this, is this has been an issue that at times gets brought up, is that we have a supermajority. Well, in theory, the supermajority could be removed by three commissioners out of the five. So what we're looking at today would be the option to require a supermajority to remove the supermajority, hence strengthening our position on this. Obviously, if there were ever a requirement, then we just all decided to raise taxes, it would still be the requirement of the initial supermajority to do so, it just would not allow this board or any current or future boards to easily remove this resolution with a 3-2 vote.
So Commissioner, basically what you're talking about is a safeguard for a safeguard.
That is correct.
Well, makes sense to me, I guess. I guess my question is, we don't have to have a supermajority to approve the supermajority for the supermajority, do we?
I hope not.
And that can... I actually talked about that. It's sort of like that mirror effect.
It's not the dumbest question I've ever asked, but it's probably close.
No, I agree.
It's like that infinite mirror effect. Where does it stop?
Oh yeah, I'm in that, I'm in that mirror.
No, I agree, it's repetitive.
I'll just say that we have state laws, they can repeal, they can be repealed by the state legislature. In home-rule counties, you have charters, there's a specific procedure for repealing that. We have, as county commissioners, ordinances and resolutions, and typically, it's three out of five can repeal it, so...
So, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my question was, and this was done in February of 2011, is there any history on this, on, if that was discussed when this was done, or just not talked about? And then, if, if the commissioners would pass this, then we're passing it in, in theory, and you would need to write something, somebody would need to write something...
I would think...
Technically, legally, that we would then approve.
Right, what I would suggest is, if the board's interested in adding the supermajority to the supermajority, then we give that direction, and then we'll bring back...
So this would be the first step.
I would, that, I think would be best, therefore, you have it in writing, you know exactly what you're approving.
That was my concern, because again, I think I like the idea, but before I say yes to it, I'd like to see how it's going to look. Not that I don't trust everybody.
Yeah, certainly, and as I recollect, and Ted, Deb, and Tim can all chime in as well, the 59th Board, during their first budget deliberations, instituted this policy...
Ted and Deb, why don't you come on up, anyway, because you can be on the next...
And, I'm sorry to be putting you on the spot, and it was, I don't recall there being a lot of discussion, or, you know, it was their feeling that this was important, is the way I...
I do think it's important, and what I'd like to see coming back, if we get it, is essentially a new resolution, and you're just going to be adding language, I imagine, under whereas, that it takes a supermajority to change this resolution, and I'd be happy to sign it.
It did come up in a subsequent board. Commissioner Fraser, I think, introduced a repeal option for repealing the original supermajority resolution, and it was not even acted on, nobody was interested in that, so, that's a brief history.
So do we want, do we proceed by general consent that we want to see this? Do we have to vote on this?
I think just general, is the board...
Need a super, supermajority direction.
That means Stella's voting, so we're good.
Well, that's what I was going to say, let's ask Stella, and maybe she'll give us the guidance, but, okay, so...
It sounds creative and say, this can only be changed with a vote of six of the five of us.
Six of them.
Okay, so it sounds like we're moving forward with, you know, presenting us verbiage where it would take a supermajority to change, you know, modify or change the existing resolution.
Yes, next Thursday, we'll have one in front of you to vote on.
Sounds good.
This is for the next...
Thank you.
So... FY24 preliminary recommended CIP and bond authorization.
Thank you very much.
This is the first of many spiral notebooks we will be getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did everybody get a copy of this?
Yes.
Do you know where I looked for it?
One for Tim.
Where I looked for it?
Thanks. That's your job, Commissioner, you have to pass it on to Tim.
Just have to remember when to throw out these books and when to get the approved books, because they will add up in your office.
You're not going to ask questions about this, are you?
There's a test at the end. There's a test at the end.
Yeah.
Is it, uh, is it cumulative or is it unit specific?
It's open book, does that help? It's open book.
Oh, she's got more.
There's always more.
Oh, we, we have them.
We have this. This is the same thing?
Is it?
I think so.
I want that. Is it? I got this.
Better safe.
Ed, it's, it's, this one is for those hard to, hard of reading.
Yeah, like me.
This is for me.
Do you want to give one to Stella?
No.
Just, you know.
I don't think she's interested.
Sir.
You lost the commissioner.
I did?
Yes.
Let's give it a, a few, uh, seconds and.
You know, I have to say more than once this morning, uh, going through this meeting, I keep thinking like, who's this standing over here? Cause I see the T-shirt and I'm like, oh, somebody wants to talk about something. And then I'm like, oh, it's the giraffe.
I saw the giraffe and I said, as if I don't have enough people weighing in on this now I've got a giraffe looking over my shoulder.
How long is it here?
Two weeks, so she'll be circulating around various departments. I've heard rumors she may be driving a snowplow if we get snow, I don't know.
I think our next meeting, it should be on her side.
You think we could fit it in Tim's office?
Good question.
It barely fit in the elevator, that's what I know. She's a little tall.
I wonder who put this on, the glasses, reading glasses.
I like the reading glasses. Did she come with the reading glasses?
Uh, yes.
Or is that a new addition?
She showed up with the reading glasses, yes.
He's very intelligent.
Okay, so, uh, item number 10, FY24 preliminary recommended CIP and bond authorization.
So this is the first public step in the next budget process. Uh, we're actually here to do two things today. One is to share with you the preliminary recommended CIP. This iteration exists to give to the planning commission so they have something to react to, uh, to give their approval that this is consistent with the county's master plan. Uh, before we go to them, we share it with you so that you see what's gonna be going, going there. I'll talk a little bit more about, well, I'll talk a lot more about that in just a second. Second thing we're gonna do is talk about bond authorization. Uh, every year we have to go to the General Assembly to get authority to issue debt. That legislation is the same legislation every year, except there's a blank we have to fill in, how much are we asking for? Uh, the second thing we'll be doing today is getting your approval to send that number down to the, the General Assembly. So you have a few things in your hands up there. One is this orange book, this is what was requested in the CIP process. Uh, people often ask me, so how much do people request? And I never know the answer because my starting point is never, what did people ask for? My starting point is, what do we already have planned? How much money do we think we have and how do we build to work within that, that number? But you can see what people ask for. Uh, much of this is not gonna be in the recommendations. And it's also important to note that there are other things people might be interested in that don't even show up here. Sometimes people will make a call themselves that that'd be good to do, but I'm not sure it's the most important thing. Or they might say, I don't see a chance of this moving through and they don't even ask for it. So this, this is what officially went through the process. Then the yellow book is the preliminary recommended CIP. So first, what is the preliminary recommended CIP? It's a first look. It's fiscally feasible, although with where we are right now, we have to be, I have to say a little bit more about fiscally feasible. Uh, we, we believe this is doable this year, but you remember, our operating plan is currently not in balance. So when we say anything is fiscally feasible, uh, once we look beyond today, we're saying we still have things to work out. Uh, consistent with Commissioner goals, this is another tough one right now. We know very little about what this board's goals are for the CIP. So this is more about consistent with the decisions that were made for the plan that is currently in, in place. Uh, as we move through the process, uh, it could be that this board will take some paths that we have not built into this plan yet, but that, that will, um, build as we go. A continuation of existing plans, this is always true. Uh, you building your six-year operating plan or six-year capital plan is not a commitment to anything. It's a statement of intent, it's a roadmap for where we think we're going. But not only can it change, we know it will change. There will always be a, a change as we have another year's worth of information, another year's worth of discussion by the board and other things coming up that we had not planned for. And, uh, and for you, maybe the most important point here is this is the starting point for your discussions. Kind of flip side, what the preliminary recommended CIP is not. It is not the final CIP. So anybody out there who looks at this and says, oh, I'm not in here, story's not over. On the other side, what you want is in here, the story's not over either. It is not the end of analysis. The budget analysts continue to work with the agencies, not on every one of these. Some of these we've gotten to the point we would believe need to, but there are some things where work continues and that will be true as we move through the process. And it is not a commitment to project funding, timing or revenue mix. Now eventually we will, we'll be making commitments for fiscal year 24, but again, the rest of it remains a plan. Three big ideas as you think about this. The CIP is largely dedicated to maintaining the infrastructure we already have. There are a lot, not a lot of new initiatives and even some of the big projects that we have right now, and there are not a large, large number, but there are more big projects than there have been for more than a decade. Uh, but East Middle School and Career and Tech are largely about maintaining infrastructure. Career and Tech, we are adding some space, but a lot of it is about taking care of what is already there. Uh, the two big projects we have that are really new initiatives would be the Sheriff's Headquarters and the State's Attorney's Headquarters. And when I say new, uh, they're not new starting this moment, but they are construction projects ahead of us. I think as you consider your capital budget, you'd be very careful about adding projects that are gonna bring ongoing costs with them. Again, we're currently overcommitted on the operating side. So every new operating cost just makes our problems that much bigger. And when we talk about operating costs, there's a lot of things to think about. Uh, if we issue debt, we have debt service, that's gonna add a cost to our, to our budget. But it's also things like, does this project increase the need for people? Are we gonna have electric bills? Are we gonna have, uh, oil bills? Are we gonna have grass to mow? We have new things to maintain and this is a further down the road kind of thing, but something that's growing importance in my mind. We need to remember, everything we build, a new park, a new road, a new building, someday is gonna need to be renewed. And we, we should not ignore that as we're making the decisions on, do we want to do something new today? If we find ourselves in a situation where we want to decrease our spending for capital purposes, there's not a lot of flexibility here. Most of what we're doing is stuff that just has to get done. Uh, probably the two big exceptions would be the State's Attorney Headquarters and the Sheriff Headquarters. Now, I'm not suggesting you could easily back away from those, just saying, if you found yourself in a situation where you said, we have to find a way to spend less money to free up dollars for something else, those would be decisions you can make.
Example, um, the Sheriff's Headquarters down Eldersburg. When we took that away, we, we had it pushed out, but then we basically.
The precinct.
The precinct, yeah. That freed up.
I'm sorry.
Dollars, right? I mean, that was, uh, you know, at first it was on a certain day, then we pushed it out further, but now it's not even in, I don't believe, the CIP.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So that, that's an example of what you're saying.
Commissioner Rothing, that, that sort of answered part of my question. What happens to that project if we cancel it? But the, the money itself, we are not obligated in any other way to, to spend that money. That, that money can come back, comes off the CIP budget. There isn't, because of its, because of its a bond issuance, other things, there's nothing tying our hands. Uh, that money comes back to us, is that, is that right?
You gonna say something?
Um, well, you answer first and then I'll see if you answer correctly.
She'll give, give you the right answer. So conceptually, yes, uh, the board decides to put these things in, the board can decide to take them out. Occasionally there are things where we are tied to some law, some state or federal mandate that might complicate that. Uh, but taking it out can mean different things. If we planned to sell debt for it, uh, we, this will come up in other discussions, but we, we try to time the issuance of debt so that we're, we don't issue it before we need to spend the money. Most of it actually follows the spending. So if we haven't issued the debt yet, all that happens is a planned issue debt goes away. So it doesn't create any money, but it makes a planned expenditure go, go away. If we have sold debt, uh, now we do have some money in hand that is freed up for another purpose, although that can get complicated too, but we don't need to get into that today. If we have cash on it, you can take cash and put it wherever you want. Uh, again, few exceptions, you know, if it's a wreck and parks project where we have program open space, that's a state dedicated revenue, uh, you can stop the project, but you can't go pave a road with that, with that money. So the easy answer to your question is yes, but when we get into actual things happening, there might be all kinds of details we have to talk about.
And we did not, um, obligate dollars to that precinct at that point, did we?
We had, we had, it was planned in the budget, but there was nothing tied.
But it wasn't obligated and then we.
Sold bonds or anything?
No, and then we pushed it out further and, um, you know, it's, it's risk mitigation. It's, it's working with, uh, the community and the sheriff and figuring out what made sense. But we took it off to allow us to look at other opportunities for other projects, so.
So did that get you where you needed to go?
It did, I, you know, I, I appreciate that, uh, the hypothetical case being, you know, we don't know what the future holds and we need, we need money. So I say, hey, what, let's, you know, let's take the money from this project that's planned in the future and because we need it to use it for something else. But I understand your point of being, it's not quite that simple, but.
And you'll, you'll find that this will, will happen a lot. You're gonna ask me what you think is a simple question that gets a simple answer and I often will say, well, it's not quite as simple as that and depending on the situation, we'll figure out how far we have to go explaining the complications.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Okay, capital fund, and I say this, this way because we talk about the capital budget, but it can get mixed up exactly what that means. Remember government, governments run on fund accounting. So your operating budget is actually the general fund. We have a capital fund, but projects that are associated with your enterprise funds, solid waste, airport, uh, water and sewer, are separate funds of thems, of their own. So their capital projects are in their funds, not in the capital fund, but they all show up in the capital budget. Are you having fun yet? Just wanna give you a, a little history, some context for where we are relative to where we've been. The red bars are history, the blue bars are the CIP that we're talking about now. And you could see what capital fund spending was over these years. Uh, you'll notice there was a significant dip, that was reacting to the Great Recession. Uh, but like many other things, we've, we've never gone back to the same levels of activity on the capital side that we used to. And, and this is literally true. If you go to a capital budget book from 15 years ago and you look at it compared to this, the size difference is, is easily noticeable. Uh, this doesn't fully tell the story though, so I want to show you the same information now adjusted for inflation. And what you see is our spending is considerably lower than it was in a practical way than it was what at another time. And even this isn't the whole story, cause all we're doing here is using, um, the Consumer Price Index, which isn't really a very good measure of the costs that we're facing on construction projects. So I would say it would look even more interesting if we actually built in cost of steel and cost of asphalt and, and things like that. So, um, not going anywhere with this, just want you to have some understanding that we truly are doing less now than we did historically. Some more history and in a minute, I'm gonna be showing you what the projections for our outstanding debt will be based on this plan. But I wanted you to have some history to understand, we're gonna be telling you that outstanding debt is gonna be growing, but I want you to know that it's growing after years of actually having decreased significantly. You'll see in fiscal year 11, we had about $330 million of outstanding debt. That dropped to about $240 million in FY22. So over 11 years, we actually cut our debt by about a, a third. Now, nobody, I don't, I don't think, ever thought we could continue doing that forever. I mean, the, the needs don't go away. Uh, and we are gonna see that this, this path will change now. Now, as we look ahead, based on this CIP, you'll see that outstanding debt is going to, to start to grow. But even at this, at fiscal year 29, um, 18 years after that fiscal year 11 number I showed you, we will have gone from about $330 to $410 million. And of course, this is not a straight line into the future. This is based on the specific projects that we're talking about here. Uh, as we consider what other things are or are not in our future, then this will change. So what's in the preliminary recommended CIP? We're not gonna go through all the projects, there are just certain ones I wanna touch on because they are big, they're important, they're noteworthy for some reason. And I mentioned this before, but important again, you know, this idea that most of what we're doing is about maintaining the things that we already own. Uh, it's also about maintaining our efforts in agricultural land preservation and in water quality. And remember with water quality, uh, much of what we're doing is based on the clean water, Federal Clean Water Act and as it is implemented by the Maryland Department of Environment. Uh, so you have other people telling you what you need to be doing here, not specifically project by project, but the, the end results that we need to be working toward. Uh, we have to make some changes to our emergency communications system. Uh, in a simple way, this is about taking some old technology and updating it. Uh, it's not really a discretionary item, it's something we, we have to do. Uh, the Career and Tech Center for the school system, well on its way. Uh, renovating the existing building and adding a, a significant piece of new space. East Middle School, school replacement, also well under its way. A long list of park projects. In most years, we, where you see the most activity is with park projects and that is because so much of it is funded by program open space, a state shared tax. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, that's dedicated to this purpose, doesn't buy you anything else, uh, but it does allow us to keep going with park projects.
Do we use other funds besides project open space to fund park projects?
Um, in, in this, some money goes from the county to towns or the cities for construction also. Is that part of this or is that a whole separate thing?
Well, there's not really money going to towns for projects. We have a place that where we cooperate on, uh, water quality projects. Uh, when we're doing, the eight towns in the county used to each have their own permits. MP, uh, National Pollution Elimination.
NPDS, Natural Pollution Elimination Systems.
Leave it at that.
So we, we each had permits. Uh, a few years ago, we all went together on one permit and. And part of what we agreed to do with the towns there is when we took on projects that existed inside the towns, the towns would be funding 20% of the cost of those projects, and the county would be putting in 80%. That's in our budget though, that doesn't show up in, in their budgets.
Some, some project open space money can go to them. Is that something through you and Parks and Record, is that?
Yeah, so that's basically a pass through.
Okay.
It's, it's not so much us deciding to give people money as comes from the state and then we give it to them. So when I talk about maintaining infrastructure, what am I talking about? Roads and bridges, HVAC, roofs, paving, a lot of asphalt. You know, when you think about the buildings we have and you think about the school system, with the schools, it's not just parking lots, but you know, bus loops and roads in and out of school, school sites. Our parks. You know, we need, we build parks and then you have to maintain them. Technology goes on forever. Stormwater ponds, water and sewer, all these things need ongoing renewal. You know, and back on that idea, I talked about a little bit earlier about thinking about the future when we were deciding to take on new things. There, there are always good, good reasons for doing something new. We've gotten to a point now though, where I think we have to be asking ourselves with every new thing, do we really want to take on something more to maintain and renew in the future? Schools, you know, we already mentioned career and tech and east middle school. We have HVAC projects, roof replacement projects. You know, an interesting thing with, with the schools, and Commissioner Kyler will have some familiarity with this probably, but we went through a pretty big bubble of school roofs that need to be replaced. And much of that is attributable to a time when we were building a lot of schools. There wasn't always as much money as people might have wanted, and a choice that got made frequently was to do lower quality roofs that had lower lives, shorter lifespan. And we suddenly found ourselves with a whole lineup of roofs that need to be replaced. The good news here is, as of fiscal year 30, we will have made our way through that bubble. And, and the roofs that we're, that are being replaced are being replaced with longer life roofs. We have, we have, some of our schools now, we have expectation of 40, 50 years on, on some of the roofs.
And I think people, it's hard to understand. You have them together, but the HVAC and the roof replacements are very much tied together in how and when they can happen.
Yeah, when we have both of those happening, we, we timed the, the budget and the construction to do the HVAC before you do the roof, so you're not messing up what you, you just did. I talked about paving, technology, the school system, just like us, heavily dependent on technology, relatively short life for a lot of things that we have to, to keep replacing. We'll be running into this a little bit later, but talking about the HVAC. A big change you'll notice between this year's CIP and next year's CIP is how much money is in there for HVACs at the schools. That's because we, we had nothing in this year's budget. There were concerns about state funding, that career and tech and east middle school had sucked up all the funding, and was there gonna be anything available for HVAC projects. We've, looks like we're moving past that. The state has stepped up a little bit more than maybe we could have counted on. So you'll see that that plan is, is back in place again. Maintaining effort, agricultural land preservation, budget continues throughout, and water quality, we've already talked a bit about that. Some new things in '24 through '29. An antenna system at the Kennedy College. Basically, this is, as we move to 5G, some of the technology that was good enough before is no longer good enough to do what it was supposed to do, and we need to replace that. Kennedy College technology in '28 and '29. We have a pretty longstanding arrangement with the college where the commissioners have agreed to provide a certain amount of funding for their technology needs to be matched by fundraising for them. This is the one place where we've tried to do fundraising in connection with our capital budget that actually worked, and, and it has worked well. So they're reaching the end of the last agreement that was in place and looking to start another. We've added self-contained breathing apparatus. We've been tackling this as kind of a, as needs came up in the past, volunteer companies coming in. We're, we're now, we think we've gotten to a point where we may as well just build it into the plan because in practice, that's what's happening. And a, a, I don't know if remodeled is the right word, a, a new, better holding area for the historic courthouse. Clees Mill Road, slope repair. When we get further along, probably show you some pictures of this, but this, this is one of those things that we, it was not planned for because it was okay until it wasn't okay. Now we have some work we need to do on a, a slope that sits above Clees Mill Road. McKinstry's Mill Road, this is a bridge over tributary to Little Pape Creek. Not all water in Carroll County actually has a name, so this one just gets called tributary to Little Pape Creek. We always have bridge projects that's fairly stable in the planning, but sometimes we find that a bridge, as it gets inspected, needs to move ahead of others because it's become a, a greater concern. And you'll hear more about this again later, but for most of our bridges, 80% of the funding comes from, from the federal government. So part of what we have to do here is also match what we're trying to do with bridges to the actual flow of revenue from the federal government. There are some outdoor basketball courts, and then Stem Run, this is also a bridge over Wolf Pit Branch. When this came up, I'd never heard of Wolf Pit Branch before, and made me wonder a little bit where that name came from. Some changes from the plan that exists right now. In roads, we have two projects to do new construction, Georgetown Boulevard Extension and Monroe Avenue Extension. With both of those, we're seeing changes in, in construction costs that are leading us to revise the numbers that are in the budget. And with the pavement management, this is taking care of the roads we already have. Same story, prices are, are going up. And you see right below that scope, this is really about timing. There were some roads that we intended to do this year that we couldn't do within the money that was available, and did some rearranging over the five years to keep those next in line, but then had to rethink some of the other roads.
Ted, Georgetown Boulevard is, I think, down in Eldersburg, but where's Monroe?
Also Eldersburg.
Well, actually, they're both Eldersburg.
They're both Eldersburg?
Yeah, Georgetown is that hairpin turn by Oscars, and creating a circle there because the intent is to then take one road off of that circle, go into the beauty property, all the way like towards progress. Monroe is split by 26, right?
Actually, it comes north of 26. It's split by the Wolf property.
It's split by Wolf, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's split by Wolf property.
Right, so this is filling in, filling in a gap in an existing road.
Right. And I just, Georgetown, that, that hairpin turn is so frickin' dangerous the way it is now, because it's like a 10 mile per hour, and there's more accidents that happen on that hairpin. But creating that circle, you know, it's gonna be important, so.
Need to slow down. Need to slow down, Commissioner.
Ain't me, it's my son. No, it's, I mean, it's a ton of folks.
Just when they were this weekend, there was an accident last weekend.
Oh yeah, it's, it's crazy.
But people do need to slow down.
They do.
Most importantly, everywhere.
And there's a park project, Northwest Trail, we had to revise the cost estimates. Park restoration is a capital budget that is used to renew, like pavilions, for example, at the, at the parks. Also, cost increases. Systemic building renovations, this is for the county, again, talking about HVAC and roofs for our buildings. Generator replacements, parking lot overlays. Now, with costs for capital projects, you know, because we're planning for six years, we knew, we do need to build in certain assumptions for costs in, in the future. I just want to make sure you understand, that gets reevaluated every year. We don't, we don't build it in and then say, that's what it is. You know, if we find that asphalt drops by 20%, we will react to that. Or if steel goes up by 10%, we will react to that. So obviously, much more in here than what I just said, but I think those are, those are some of the highlights. So what's not in the preliminary recommended CIP, a much, much longer list than what's actually in. And again, I'm not gonna try and tell you everything, although it is all in the orange book. Schools, William Winchester Elementary School, modernization is next up on their priorities. You know, and talking about modernizations, we haven't done very, very many for a long time. East Middle School is getting it, career and tech is getting it. Back before that, Mount Airy Middle School, has there been something since then? It's been, been a while since we've taken on one. Now, if you think about a school, we have 40 of them, and let's say we think a school has a life of 40 years. If that's the case, you need to be doing a school a year, either a modernization or a replacement. If you say, no, they last longer than that, they last 80 years, even there, that would mean a school every other year. We are nowhere near that kind of pace. What has been happening in practice is we're handling pieces of modernizations. We do the HVAC, we do the roof, we do an electrical system, we replace windows. A few years ago, Westminster High School had bricks falling off the facade. That was in nobody's plans. That, that one turned into a bit of a, how do we get this done? But you know, it's all, if you're not doing the whole thing, you, you still have to deal with, with the pieces.
And I think your earlier comment about when they were building schools quickly, I've questioned William Winchester as being, we really being the next one. Liberty was probably the cheapest built high school, and I think we're soon gonna start paying for the cheapness of when it got built.
Yeah, and on that point, when, when we talk about priorities for modernizations, we are largely driven by the decisions that the Board of Education makes. Now, in the Budget Office, you know, we will question some things and say, well, last year you were saying this, this year you're saying this, or isn't this a bigger concern? But we are not trying to make those decisions. Kindergarten and pre-K additions, going way back to when full day kindergarten was mandated by the state, and I don't even know what this is, 15 years now? Been a long time. There, there were, I believe, four elementary schools that did not get additions. They didn't get them because of money and the need wasn't as compelling as some of the other places, but they never happened. We now have our next full day kindergarten mandate, basically, with blueprint legislation extending pre-day kindergarten to a much larger population, space will be needed. And this is very complicated for us right now because the legislation also makes this assumption that the private sector is gonna handle about half of the need. And I've not talked to anybody in a county who believes that that's actually going to happen. So we know, we're gonna have to plan for pre-K capacity additions, but right now, we don't, we don't really know what, what that means. We have, you know, John O'Neill yesterday talked about two things that are true but incompatible. You know, I think we're kind of there on, on this. We know the law says, counties, you need to handle, to handle half of this. But I think we also know it's not actually gonna play out that way. So what does that mean, and what are we gonna do with it? Don't have an answer for you right now. But that's a fairly, that's a, that's a gap. We're gonna talk some more about things that aren't in here that we need to talk about. But because it's not in here, doesn't mean we're not gonna have to deal with it. It just means we don't know how to deal with it yet. Barrier-free modifications, think ADA for, for schools. We've accomplished much of what we need to accomplish. There's not much spending going on. I believe they have somewhat of a balance, right? Security improvements, an annual request. We don't have a plan from them on what they're trying to accomplish, and we're reluctant to budget money for a theoretical idea of security. Roads that are not in. There's another place where we're looking at making a connection between some roads and also a bit of a realignment. There are some questions related to development happening there that I think need to be resolved before we can budget for this. A sidewalk down in the Eldersburg area. Public Works would like to replace some existing salt barns, add some new salt barns. Right now, there's no, it might be a good thing, but there's no compelling need to do it right now. Slacks Road improvements. We have a facility gonna be built on Slacks Road, has some challenges. We don't know what we need to do here yet. That doesn't show up in the CIP.
And facility, that's the VA Center. So it's a $200 million, give or take, facility that's gonna be funded by the state and by the feds, not by us. Slacks Road, if you go to Freedom Park, all the way down the end, make a left, that's Slacks Road where the American Legion is. It's a very difficult road. You know, there's, you know, on both sides of it. So getting that improved for ingress egress, working with the state, with federal government on that road, and then trying to come up with a, a solution. But it's gotta be dealt with because of that project, and that's a big project.
Now, if that, if that project were private, you would probably require traffic study and make the private entity at least kick in for it, if not pay for it. Is there any hope of that with, with people funding it, or?
Hope not being that course of action, but actually talking to the state, that's why I brought it up, to Secretary Ports. Now, I don't know who the new administrator, the new secretary will be, but he or she may be more amenable because it is on Governor elect's radar about this, and he is a, a 10-year veteran, and I shared with him this issue last week at Mako, so that may be a way to leverage it. Talking to Senator Cardin the other day about it, and continuing to talk to him, and he said there are four people on appropriations that represent Maryland. So keeping that on their radar is gonna be important. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna figure this out because it's gonna be a heavy lift. What I don't want to do is I don't want to tell anybody that the infrastructure does not allow us to have that facility there, because that's a big win for the county and the community for job creation and taking care of our veterans, so.
So on funding, you know, there are possibilities, right? Say, history doesn't lead us to count on somebody else funding this though.
Just one quick, you're absolutely right. If it's a private, you know, private entity, we have, county has a lot of control over how that development occurs. When it's either the state or the federal government, they, they really, basically don't tell us anything. They don't have to pull any permits, they don't have to do traffic studies, they don't... For example, when the readiness center, the Linda, Major General Linda Singh readiness center was built, the only thing that they provided to us was water and sewer utility information because they had to hook up to our system. Other than that, we wouldn't have anything. So, just that's the way it works, yeah.
No, good question though.
Okay, also not in, a bridge, Babylon Road over Still Run. This is actually a, a bridge that has been in our plans for a number of years, but we need some easements from a property owner. There's no, no indication that we are gonna be able to get them. So this, we, we have taken this bridge out of our plan. And then Woodbine Road Bridge, this, this is just a matter of funding and timing.
Yes.
So I mentioned a little bit earlier, we have to match up what we're gonna do to the availability of federal money. A bridge that we will do, but it just doesn't fit in this plan yet.
Wouldn't that be shared cost with, is it, isn't that on the county line? Does, does that particular south branch, Patapsco? Does, does that particular south branch, Patapsco?
We don't share costs on any bridges. I don't know when or how this happened, but every bridge that crosses a county line belongs to, for maintenance purposes at least, belongs to one county or the other.
Okay, good, good to know. Thanks.
Yeah, and I, I forget, I think, I think I've been told, and we can double check this, that all the ones on the Howard County, Carroll County line are ours. How we got that privilege, I don't know. But the ones on the Frederick and Carroll, this one I'm sure of, are like, from north to south, they're every other. So they own one, we own the next, they own one, so, yeah.
Good to know.
Some projects that aren't in for wrecking parks. And again, this is largely about available funding and what you're able to make work. With Union Mills, we're stopping here to talk a little bit. The county owns that property and the, and the buildings, and we've spent considerable funding on it over years. And something I was talking with the last board about, you know, no, no board has ever sat down to, to say, how much are we willing to spend on the whole Union Mills property? You know, if I told you we were going to spend $100 million, you would probably say, no, we're not. But we've never said, where, where is that line? How much are we willing to spend? And that includes, we've, we've spent things, you know, keeping the, the, the water wheel and all the pieces go with that, you know, historically accurate, and the, drawing a blank on...
The miller?
The, the mill, keeping the mill historically accurate. And I asked, again, last board, I said, you know, I know why we want it to be historically accurate. We're unusual, there aren't very many of these, these left. But again, how much money are we willing to spend to keep it historically accurate? So I just wanted to plant that seed for you when Union Mills comes up in the future, that maybe this board will want to have that conversation. And this session, in future years, will go faster because part of what I'm doing is what I need to give you today, but also building some context for you to be able to start talking about this, since you haven't been through it already. Workforce development, they'd like an elevator and another accessible restroom. They, they have what they need. This would be nicer, but doesn't have to happen. Community College Athletic Complex, this is a big, big project. College very much wants it, I understand why they want it. Given the things that you have pressing on you, I, I don't see how we can even entertain taking this up. Now that said, there are other things I've said I don't see how we can entertain taking this up, that boards have taken up anyway. But there's no way that I would come to you with a recommendation that we build this into our plan.
You know, this is a, a good example of folks, you know, saying, well, so-and-so has it, you know? Howard County, you know, Community College has this, or this community has that with fields and other things and, and athletic complexes. We're not the same. Carroll County Community College is not the same as Howard Community College, is not the same as others. They're funded differently, they're different animals. They may meet, you know, the same needs of, you know, Community College, but they are, they're very different. And that's what we got to own up to, is understanding those differences and why we can't, you know, do all the things they want us to do, as opposed to something like Howard Community College, because that's...
The idea of a parking garage somewhere in the government complex comes up pretty regularly. We almost certainly will have to do it someday, but we're not thinking that day, that day is here yet. Elections, this is another one, this is, this is a hole in our plans. You get the privilege of paying for the operations of the Board of Elections and for providing them space. They are being squeezed. I think they have a valid argument that they need more space, different space. We don't know where we're going with this yet, so we have no way to build this into the plan, although it, it has to, has to happen. So this is another one where I don't want you to think, and not being in here doesn't mean that it shouldn't be in here. One thing, you know, we believe that we should explore rented space for this, you know, there might be opportunities. One of their big things is they need storage space for all, all the voting equipment. That doesn't have to be fitted out office space. And there are places where sometimes you have offices in the front and storage in the back. Maybe we can get there, we might have to look at building, but at the very least, I think we need to take a real hard look at different ways of approaching this.
And, and they need it, but what's depressing, I had no idea how many square feet they have and need, and it, it is big.
Yeah, and the needs, in this, the last 10, 15 years, the, the needs have grown a lot.
Right.
And you'll hear about this when we get to the operating budget, but, you know, it's a tough situation for you. I mean, the, the state makes decisions, you pay for them, and there's not a whole lot of interest in what you think about it. Public Works would like a, another building to put facilities in to give fleet and roads more space. Understandable thing to want, but not sure they have a compelling and urgent argument Farm Museum, they're looking for a, another barn and for some restroom renovations, those aren't in here. Cabic Court Water Supply. This is a little development down near Hoods Mill Landfill. We have a few people that we provide water to. Complicated situation, this isn't the time to try and get into it, just if it comes up, there's not a project in here for that. Public Works would like the maintenance center to be connected to Westminster's sewer system. The septic system is working, there's no problem to be solved here. You know, you know, it might say, be nicer to hook it up to a, to a system, but again, we don't see a compelling and urgent need. Transit building addition, probably have a decent argument for more space. When we built this, there was some grant funding available to us. We knew what the funding was, we built to the amount of funding that we had, not to what we thought the building ought to be. So I say, probably have a reasonable need, but again, can't fund every good idea. Senior Centers, looking for a renovation to Tawney Town, and they'd like to enclose the back porch section of the Westminster Senior Center. Health Department looking to expand some. Now, if we do move the election board out of the current space, that could provide a way to give the Health Department some more space. I mean, it wouldn't be the same building, but it's, I mean, just feet away. Then some other smaller things. There's things that are being discussed on how can we do some things, but none of these turned into capital projects. Circuit Court would like to renovate some courthouse space, like to replace the visitations, families...
Family visitation.
Family visitation, yeah. Like to replace that. Now, last few years, we've actually been doing a lot of improvements to the existing building, but they would still prefer a new building. And then library, they would like a major renovation to Eldersburg, and we've even heard some rumblings of maybe they would like to just have, build a new library. Renovation to North Carroll Library, renovation to Westminster Library, none of those are, are projects. On North Carroll, something that might come up, the senior center used to be in the bottom of the building that the library is on, on top of. That space is not the library's, that's still yours to decide, you know, what you want to do with it, if anything. I think the library would like to be able to expand into that space, but the starting point isn't that that's their choice to, to make. With library projects, there's a pot of state funding available that we've made good use of in, in Carroll County in connection with library projects. They made some changes in how that's distributed that led to us getting less than we were at one time, but there's still money available. But when we get this money, it's only a piece of the funding that would be necessary for any, any of these projects. And something that will come up in this process, probably, is the library saying, we'd like to go after the state money, but we need the county to say that you're interested in doing a, a project. That will be before you've finished your discussions, but if we take that up, this is one of those places where I think, what you need to be thinking about is not, do we want to go after the state money, but are we willing to commit the county money that's going to be necessary to get that state money? Sheriff looking at a few things in connection with the existing detention center. Annual reminder, we will need to build a new detention center someday. We've had times where we were well over capacity in the existing detention center. That's not where we are today, but that's not to say it's not going to happen again someday. And it's an aging facility. If we built a detention center today, we would not build that. We would build in a way that would allow a smaller number of people to watch a greater number of space. We also build in a way that allows segregation of prisoners so that you can make better use of your space. Sometimes what we run into now is, you know, you have women and men have to be housed differently, you have people who are sick, people with mental health problems, and you end up inefficiently using the space, not because anybody's doing anything wrong, but it's just what you're forced into, to doing. With, with a new design, we would put ourselves in a position to be able to handle that better. When that comes, though, this is going to be an expensive project, that may, probably the most expensive project Carroll County's ever had. Then also looking for some changes in the existing sheriff space, which is above the detention center. Oh, yeah, and I, another related thing, in connection with building the state's attorney's building, there's space the sheriff is using right now in what's still called the roadway building from years ago. That building's going to have to come down, and we need to find places to put the activities that are in there. We don't have a plan for that year, yet, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with it. High-level look at what's happening in the capital fund, you see 23 compared to 24, and also 23 through 28 compared to 24 through 29. Big change is how much state funding is in the mix, because there was money going into Career and Tech and East Middle School that doesn't have to go in again this time. We have, you know, some of the projects we've talked about, you have some things you're doing this year that you're not last year. And more so than the operating budget, the capital budget tends to be kind of lumpy. You know, it goes up and down depending on what you happen to be doing in a given year or six years. Now, the enterprise funds. So these are the capital projects associated with your enterprise funds. Not going to run through, oh, yeah, and utilities is the other place where you'll see a long list of projects, and this is just, just a handful of them. But again, they're, they're all in here. Yeah, and one thing I should say here, this, this will come up during the, your operating sessions, but it's very important to the capital. When you consider your water and sewer rates, we're not just looking at operations, we're also looking at, at capital projects. We need to be calculating in the cost of doing these into the, the rates that we're putting together. And today's not the day, but just to say this for the first time, you know, with water and sewer, we pretty much know what the costs are. If revenue does not match the costs, all that can happen is something that needs to get done isn't getting done. There can be a, a lot of temptation on water and sewer rates to, to say, you know, this is going to be a burden for some people, we don't want to raise rates, can we phase this in? All those things lead to a mismatch between revenue and expenditures, and just don't want anybody ever allowing themselves to think that it won't have an impact, because it will.
And that's what happened last year, was it was pushed off to the right for years, and then last year, it was significantly raised, as opposed to this small increments, and it walloped some people because, you know, and especially down the Freedom area, because it's a large area, when it comes to rates, you know? And we got to own up to it when it happens, as opposed to just push it off to the right, and then the next board takes it on. Because, you know, I was like, I don't know how long it was pushed off, but it was significant until we made a decision. And, yeah, it was, that was painful, so.
Airport, of course, there's the big runway project that doesn't actually show up in, in this CIP.
Right.
And then there's a very small project, we have some rental money from properties that were bought, bought with FAA money. We can use that for, I mean, sometimes we replace a vehicle, do some painting or, you know, little stuff. I don't remember what we have in this year, but what are we talking about, like $25,000?
It's not much, 36 actually now.
36, okay. Fiber network, we'll talk more about this when we get to the operating budget, but it's not a place where it touches the capital. You know, to run our network, there are, there's equipment that you need that gets the communication from one place to another, and like other technology, needs to be replaced with regularity. When we set up this, when we set this up as an enterprise fund, the thinking at that time was that the revenue we were going to generate with the excess capacity we built into it was going to cover these costs. It's become clear that that's not going to happen, and we have no prospects for that, that happening. So just this year, last year, we started building this in, into our plans as, you know, it's an expenditure, it's not, it's, we, we know we need the budget for it, it can't, you can't just pretend that the enterprise fund is going to figure it out. Here's the totals on the enterprise funds. The big reason for the drop here is the money that was budgeted for Northern Landfill, for, for purchasing the land and the first piece of developing it. And we'll be talking more about this, but again, don't want you have, don't want you thinking that there's enough money budgeted now for what we're going to have to do to develop that, that landfill. We don't know what it's going to cost yet, but it's going to be a lot more than what we have right now. Some other things that, well, I say some other things, we're going to come back to some I've talked about. But we know we have a problem with the Public Safety Training Center with chemical they call PFAs getting into water. This is moving our way, we know it's there, we know we're going to have to do something. We don't know what that something is yet, so we don't know how much it's going to cost yet, but we will have to deal with it. We talked a little bit about Slacks Road, I was just talking about the Northern Landfill. The Circuit Court would like a new courtroom. This comes up every now and then, you know, they start looking to the future and saying, we're going to need a new courtroom. We'd like to see some more data on how squeezed they are now before we begin planning for, you know, the expenditure of a, of a new courtroom. We talked some about elections, and we talked a little bit about the Eldersburg Library Some things to be thinking about, you know, for schools, state funding, you know, how much are they going to make available? And I think about this every year, but when you have a change in administration, it gets a little bit bigger for me because you just don't know what's going to happen, could be good, could be bad, but right now, we don't know. I talked some about the idea of modernizations. Redistricting, you know, in South Carroll, we know, well, we don't have a capacity problem in Carroll County, we do have capacity concerns in South Carroll. And there's effort right now for them to take a look at redistricting, can that be a, a solution? In my mind, it almost has to be the solution. I, I don't know how I would come to you suggesting we build another school when we have capacity in, in the county. Blueprint and pre-k, we talked about that a, a little bit earlier. It's not in here now, but it's, it's going to be. Now, the state will participate, probably, but just like full day kindergarten, it's not all it sounds like. You know, they'll say, well, that's a priority for us. You know, they'll say, well, that's a priority for us, but unless they increase the size of the pot to accommodate that, all it means is you've got money for pre-K addition and not for some other school that you would have gotten it. Things to think about, infrastructure, we've talked about this a bit along the way, just want to take another minute to talk, you know, real big picture on infrastructure. The Budget Office, we've been working for some years to try and get our hands around what's everything we own, what's the value of all that? How much do we need on an average annual basis to be able to replace, renew all that infrastructure? And I say we've been working on it for years because we don't have time to just devote ourselves to doing this, so we kind of do a little bit when we can find time to do it, and, you know, it's progressing, but it's slow. But I have no doubt when we get to the end of this, what we're going to find is we are not putting, we're not budgeting enough money to actually renew all of our infrastructure. And piece by piece, we always deal with it, but I'd like to get us into a position where we have a clearer idea of where we stand. We talked about elections, talked about Health Department, the roadway building. We kind of touched on this a little bit, but cost increases and supply chain issues are very much on our minds. Things like this are going on, there's no way to ever know you're getting it right. All we can do is try and get it as right as we can, and then when we get more information, we react. Okay, that's the end of what I brought you about the CIP. Before I move on to bond authorization, is there anything you would like to ask or anything you'd like to talk about on that?
I think it's a whole lot to absorb at this point.
And we're just starting.
And we're just starting, so. Really good rundown, a lot of things I think that we've already highlighted to each other, you know, in offices, and yeah, just a lot to absorb. And like you said, just starting, and the community, you know, every one of these is a real priority to somebody out there somewhere. And so town halls and meetings and all that kind of fun stuff will get their input as, why aren't you doing this, or why, you know?
Yep.
And that's okay.
I've been to community meetings in just about every part of the county, and there's no part of the county that I went to who has ever said anything other than, why does everybody else always get everything and we don't get anything?
And it's, so I appreciate it. Now, unless there's comments, questions, we move on to the bond authorization request.
All right. A really important idea to understand, especially for the four new ones who haven't gone through this before, what we're building into our plan is what drives the dollar amount we're going to request in authorization. If you don't want to issue debt, the time to make that decision is when we're building the plan, not when we come back to get bond authorization, or even worse, when we go to issue the debt.
Right.
Now, once you've made these decisions, the rest of it should just flow from there. This is difficult timing. We have to give the General Assembly a number now. This is your first session. We have a lot of work to do before you get done, and it's a pain that it works this way, but this is how it works. We'll talk a little bit more about what it means to get this authorization though, but just for now, that itself does not commit you to anything. So we have, you know, the timing of this versus the General Assembly schedule and us trying to get our budget done. Now, some words that will get used, just to make sure we're all together on what we're saying. When we say appropriated, that means you've adopted a budget, you've actually put revenues and expenditures into a law. Those are appropriated funds, and we know, excuse me, how much you said was available and for what purpose. Authorized, this is when we go to the General Assembly and say we'd like authorization to sell debt. They are passing a law that says Carroll County can sell 20 million, 40 million, $60 million worth of debt this year. Issued is when we actually go and sell the debt. When this time comes, you'll see Jenny Hobbs coming to you instead of me saying, okay, we're ready to put this out for sale. And she'll talk more about this sometime, I'm sure, but we're very conscious about the timing of when we sell bonds. First, we don't want to be paying debt on bonds that we don't actually need yet. And there are also what they call arbitration rules. You can't be making money on bonds that you sold as tax exempt bonds, you have to be careful for other reasons when you sell. So a lot of what we issue, Jenny will actually be coming to you after the fact, we've already spent the money, now we're going to issue bonds and we'll reimburse ourselves. And I think, was she in recently with the resolution to reimburse?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you might remember, she came in, and this is why she was in. You gave the authority basically for us to spend the money, knowing that we'll sell bonds later and then reimburse what we spent. Okay, so appropriations don't commit you to spending money. Now, obviously, it's a clear statement of intent, we're going to do this, we're going to spend the money, but it doesn't mean you can't change your mind. Now, once we get to that point, hopefully we don't change our minds for less than compelling reasons, because, you know, we are moving ahead for some reason. But it's important to understand, you can stop, you can say, oh, we said we're going to do it, but now we're not. Authorized does not commit you to selling anything. All it does is say you can sell these bonds now, you can still make a choice later not to. Although again, emphasize, the choice to not spend ought to be tied to this, not to the bond process. Now, issued, once we issue, now that is a commitment. You have debt service, you don't get to say in a tough year, well, you know what, let's not pay the 10 million, let's pay $8 million this year. And planned, that's the other five years. It's a plan, where we think we're going, doesn't commit you to doing anything, and it's not yet appropriated. You know, the money that you have planned for a road in the future doesn't allow that road to move forward. You have to actually get to the year where you enacted a law that says we have an appropriation for that road now. So our request this year, and this is driven by what's in this plan, is $65.6 million. Again, this is, oh, okay, now, what we actually need will almost certainly change before we get to the end of this. You might change your mind on some projects, cost estimates could change, we issue some debt on behalf of fire companies. That's not it, that doesn't cost us anything, but it does change how much we will issue. But you don't need to worry about those things. This enables us to move ahead as if this is going to happen. If it turns out we don't need the bonds, it doesn't commit you to any action. And every now and then, this doesn't come up a lot, but sometimes we will accumulate enough authorization that didn't get used, that we might come to you one year and say, we have sufficient authorization, we don't need to get any new authorization this year, and then we draw that back down, and then over time that will build up again.
And that happened last year.
Oh, I fell behind. So the rest of the process in March will be coming to you with an overview, which will, that's largely about revenue projections, but also some about, here are things that are going to be coming your way, things that you need to be thinking about. When we say recommended budget, that will be for your operating budget, your capital budget, enterprise funds, all the pieces. In April, you will hold a series of meetings with agencies. This will be their opportunity to come to you and say, this project or this budget change was not included in management and budgets recommendation, commissioners, we would like you to consider this. The General Assembly session ends in April, another timing problem for us. We're well into our process before the state gets done, and it's not unusual for something that matters to us to be decided on the last day of the General Assembly, sometimes at 11:59 on the last day. And that can be difficult for us. In April, you will release your proposed budget. You know, the recommended budget is me handing something to you, proposed budget is you handing something to the public. Here's where we think we're going, public, here's your opportunity to weigh in. For anybody in the public who's listening though, you know, whenever anybody asks me, well, when should I tell the commissioners what I think, I'm against this, I'm for this, you ought to do this, my answer is always now. It doesn't matter where you are in the year, now's the time. Don't wait for the public hearing. Don't wait for anything to happen, just let the commissioners know what you're thinking about. The earlier you have the information, the more useful it can be to you in your deliberations as you're trying to move toward a proposed and adopted budget. So in May, we have the public hearing. The public hearing is not a conversation between people and the commissioners, it's a public opportunity to share in three minutes a person their thought on some aspect of the budget. And then in May, we adopt the budget. That's usually 25th, 27th, 28th, something like that, but it has to be done by the last day of May. Okay, so if there are questions or anything you need to talk about, we can take that on now. If not, or when we get done, what we would need from you then is a vote to approve us requesting the bond authorization from the General Assembly.
I have a question about the process. So again, you've done all this, and today we make a motion and approve the authorization, and that goes to the delegation. Is this like a local preference bill that nobody else down there pays a whole lot of attention to?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Really, the only thing that would get in the way is if our delegation objected to it for some reason.
Yeah.
I guess you never know for sure, but, well, I do remember, they used to have me come down to testify. Fortunately, they stopped doing it, it wasn't particularly useful exercise. But there was a time when a committee chair said to me, well, your delegation voted against something, I forget, again, maybe against the budget. And said, that's true, but that's not really about us, but he was making a connection. It did get approved, but scared me for a minute.
Between the state budget and, right? They voted against the state budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so he was not happy that they had voted against the state budget and was looking to take it out on our bond authorization. Didn't happen though.
Right. Any other questions? Again, it's, I know it's a lot to absorb if you have not gone through this. But I will, I'll make the motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve bond authorization of $65.6 million for FY '24.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second, any further discussion on this?
I'd just like to mention that I like it when you smile and nod your head after he says that.
Oh, okay.
Gives me confidence.
And the bad one is when she goes.
Yeah, so watch out for those.
Is that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Going into open admin, Mr. Schwamm, do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the only thing I want to share at this time, and I forgot to say in priority Carroll, I attended an event at Stratosphere down Eldersburg. The Carrolltown Elementary School community held a silent auction with baskets and basically took over the entire Stratosphere. And it was all fundraising for the playground. It's like they figured out how to do it right, and I won't say they, I mean, they're really smart. Absolute kudos to Vanessa, who I think had anywhere from 50 to plus baskets in her home forever, but the coordination that was done with the elementary school, with the teachers, obviously, administration, but really the parents and kids, there are kids all over the place. I was there about an hour, hour and a half, and I put my tickets and a few things, so we'll see if I get to win or not, but really cool prizes. I'm looking forward to hearing how much they raised, but I saw parents dropping just, you know, twenties and twenties on their kids, and it was really exciting to see, because that's how things get done to me in a community. So kudos to Vanessa, and I know she had a lot of support, and I don't think she'll ever do this ever again, because it was just such a heavy lift, but I apologize, I want to say that in priority Carroll. Really, I was just impressed, so. Does anybody have anything else for open admin at this time?
Just real quickly, there are several, I think like 15 or 17, either congratulatory letters here for the board to sign, and one condolence letter for the former town councilman from Tawny Town who recently passed away. So regularly do this after election, congratulate all those who have won in their particular offices, so just pass these along if you design as you're going through agendas.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Open admin?
Sixty.
No? Um, Mike? Open admin, anything? Ellen? Okay. Come on up. Let's go through agendas. Let's see. Monday, January 16th, Martin Luther in observation, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the county offices will be closed, I believe it's also a federal holiday. On Tuesday, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting down in the Reagan Room, Commissioner Gordon will be attending at 9:00 AM. At 10:00 AM, I will have one of two town hall meetings down in the senior, South Carroll Senior Center at 10:00 AM till about 12:00. Don't mess with their bingo or their lunch is what you learn very quickly down there. At 2:00 PM, Veterans Advisory Meeting, Commissioner Gordon and Kyler will be in attendance. And at 6:00 PM, the Farm Bureau Annual Legislative Dinner will occur over at Burns Hall. At the Ag Center, Commissioner Gordon, Gurren, Kyler, and Viglial will be attending, and I will be having my second of the two town hall meetings that evening at 6:30. On Wednesday is Governor Westmore swearing in ceremony, you're attending?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Gordon is attending, and there will be a legislative committee meeting virtually being held at 10:00 AM. Talk to you about that, because we may, if you want, go down there into Mike Fowler's office and do that, and this way we're down there, but we can have that conversation. 7:00 PM, Board of Education FY '24 Operating Budget Hearing will occur. I don't think it's necessary for anybody to be in attendance, but it's scheduled at the Board of Education Boardroom. At 7:00 PM is the Emergency Services Advisory Council or ESAC meeting over at the Training Center, and Commissioner Gurren will be attending. On Thursday, we will go into open session at 10:00 AM, not 9:00. We will have, we'll be doing administrative session from 8:00 to 10:00, and we'll go into open session at 10:00 AM. From that point, we have, let's see, grant application, acceptance of award for restoration projects will be discussed from Mr. Heine. Public Safety Training Center Stormwater retrofit, again, Land Resource Management will present, then DPW will present FY '24 Annual Transportation Plan. There'll be, DPW will talk about installing, excuse me, pole lighting at the Carroll County Farm Museum, and then they will ask to be per- And then they will ask to be purchasing an FY, no, excuse me, a 2022 Ford F-250. On Friday at 9:00 a.m. is a virtual meeting for the Baltimore Metropolitan Council that I will be attending. Saturday, nothing scheduled and Commissioner Kyler has the podcast on the 22nd. Nothing scheduled on the 23rd, on the 24th. Okay, is a point in time or pit count? And it's, what it is, is walking the county, looking at where homeless and encampments are in place. So it's run by Citizen Services. I will be attending with Commissioner Kyler. Just wear shoes that you're willing to go into the woods on, so. Wednesday, January 25th, Commission of Aging, excuse me, Commission on Aging Meeting and Luncheon. Commissioner Vigliati will be attending over at Westminster Senior Center. There will be 3:30 p.m., Maryland Association Counties for Mako Legislative Committee Meeting down in Annapolis where Commissioner Kyler and I will attend. And then there will be a legislative reception that evening where again, Commissioner Kyler and I will be attending down in Annapolis. Thursday, again, open session, once again, starts at 10:00 a.m. We'll have an Economic Development and Land Use Study presented by Ms. Eisenberg. Then a briefing and request to go to public hearing for rezoning on the Eldersburg Investors LLC. Again, Ms. Planning will present that. Then we'll look to for approval, FY '24 Grant Application Award of Acceptance from the Rural Legacy Program where Land Resource Management will present. That afternoon at 1:00 p.m., we will reconvene for the Environmental Advisory Council Annual Joint Meeting and Proposed FY '23 Work Plan. That will be held, it's a joint meeting with us and it'll be held down in the Reagan Room and the Environment, Environmental Advisory Council. Friday, nothing scheduled, Saturday, nothing scheduled, and Commissioner Gordon has the podcast on Sunday, January 29th. Did I miss anything, Ms. Wanda? Nothing else for open admin? What I need is a motion to recess to go into close for land acquisition.
Make a motion to go into recess.
A motion to go into closed for land acquisition.
For land acquisition.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second to go into recess, go into close for land acquisition, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to adjourn after the closed.
Make a motion to adjourn after the closed.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.